No further ado, I will call to order the Planning Commission hearing for Provo City Planning Commission. Wednesday, May 13th, 2020, and it is 6:01 PM. We have six items on the agenda tonight. Those items marked with an asterisk are legislative in nature, and the Planning Commission will be making recommendations to municipal council on those items. Those items that do not have an asterisk are administrative, and we will be actually making a decision on those items. So we have a combination of both for this evening's hearing. Before we get started, I'll ask the commissioners present to state their name and whether they have a conflict of interest with any items on this evening's agenda, starting with Mr. Howard.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Thank you. Ms. Wynden?
Maria Wynden, no conflicts.
Thank you. Ms. Urkiaga?
Laurie Urkiaga, I have a conflict on item number three.
Thank you, so noted. Ms. Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Great. Mr. Phillips?
Russell Phillips, I have no conflicts tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Thank you. And myself, Ms. Jensen, no conflicts this evening. Is that everyone that's online now of the commissioners? It looks to be.
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, we will start with item one then. Item one is legislative, so we will make a recommendation to municipal council. Tom Ariana requests a zone change from R1.6A to general commercial for property located at 852 North 500 West in the North Park neighborhood. And Mr. Aaron Ardmore will present item one. Aaron, you're on mute.
Now, could you give me control of the slides? Thank you. Okay. Go back up?
Tends to be late. Tends to lag.
Sorry, everyone, having some technical difficulties. So here's the property. It's adjacent to the hospital, just north of 800 North and east of 500 West. You can see it highlighted there. So you see the issue is the property currently is and has been for some time split in between two zones. The general commercial CG zone and the R1.6A residential zone. That R1.6A is a remnant of when there were a few homes there, but that office building has been there for quite a few years. So the zone change request is to update that to be entirely general commercial zone, to make that block consistent and make that property all one zone. The use of the building and everything is permitted by right in CP. So it's just really fixing the map to be all one zone.
Great. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ardmore?
Just curious, Mr. Ardmore, which area is the commercial and which is the residential?
If we can go back up to the map.
Commercial, it's shown in red and residential is shown in yellow.
There you go.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I had a question.
Ms. Jensen?
In the overview on page two, it says that correcting the zone map on this parcel will relieve it of a non-conformity and allow the property to continue on as a permitted use. What's the non-conformity? Just that it's different zoning?
Yeah, so it's a commercial office building and partially in a residential zone, which wouldn't be...
So there's no violation that they're trying to come in?
No, there's no zoning violation. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Wynden?
I'm just wondering how it got to be built in the first place if it was zoned residential?
That's a fair question. I don't have an answer for you on that.
Great question.
Okay, just wondering.
Any other questions for staff? All right, then I will invite the applicant, Mr. Ariana. And I, my apologies if I mispronounced your last name. If you would like to tell us anything more about your request.
Yes, my name is Brian Baxter. I'm gonna, I speak for the real estate department for Intermountain Healthcare for Tom Ariana.
Okay.
We are in the, looking to purchase this property. And in doing so, we noted that this property had the two different zonings. And so obviously, this threw up a red flag for us. And so before we purchased this property, which is adjacent to the Utah Valley Hospital, we wanted to take care of this issue to get it in conformity with the CG zone that it should be in.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Baxter? Any questions, commissioners?
Not for me.
No, seems straightforward.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Baxter. I will open item one up to public comment then. If there are any neighborhood chairs from the North Park neighborhood who would like to address item one? And I'll wait for our administrator to let us know if we have anyone who submitted a comment or is on the line. I'm sorry? Did I hear there were no comments?
I don't have any comments at this time.
All right, thank you. Did you want to wait or go ahead and?
I think we've given them enough lag time. I'm not seeing any written comments or any hands up to speak.
Great, thank you. All right, then I will close item one to public comment at this time and turn it back over to the commissioners for discussion and/or a motion or any further questions.
I'm, I'm sorry, we just, just as I closed the public comments, one just came in.
Okay, great. The wall went back up then?
Okay, and they had, the question is, okay, so this is Micah Wheatley from Provo. And the question is, I assume this is to add to the hospital? And, and that's all I have.
Okay. So we'll close, close item one to public comment. And I would ask, ask Mr. Baxter if he would like to respond to that question from the public?
It's not really adding to the hospital. I mean, we're acquiring this property. It's not really an addition to the hospital. It's, it's its own building as is right now. So we currently lease this building and we're just going to purchase it. So nothing new is going to be changing with the building. The use is going to be the same. The operation within the building is going to be the same.
Great, thank you. All right, commissioners, I will turn it back over to you for further discussion and any questions and/or a motion.
Unless there's further discussion, I'm willing to make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Wynden.
I would welcome a motion at this point.
I propose that we forward with a positive recommendation to the city council, item number one. Tom Ariana requests a zone change from the R1.6A zone to the CG zone for property located A52 North 500 West in the North Park neighborhood.
Thank you. Do we have a second to Ms. Wynden's motion?
Well, seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Phillips. All those in favor of a positive recommendation on item one to municipal council? And I'll go through the roll call. Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Wynd, Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson? Sorry, Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. We'll forward a positive recommendation on item one to municipal council. Okay, our next item, item two is administrative. Todd Sinks requests project plan approval for 736 apartment units located at 178 East 1860 South in the campus mixed-use zone. This is in the East Bay neighborhood, and Mr. Ardmore will present item two.
Thank you. So if we can go to that first slide, thank you, now. So this item was continued, if you remember, from a couple of weeks back to gather some more information and to refine the plans to match the new numbers. If we can go to the next slide. So here's the site plan revised. That's going towards the medical campus to the south. This would be the first phase of the project encompassing 325 apartment units. And this to the west would be the second phase of the apartments. Just waiting for the screen to change. Sorry, there's a lag on our slides here. There we go. Okay. We'll stop here on this level one. This was a point of discussion at the last hearing, if you recall, in regards to where the amenities are on the first floor, where the entrances would be, and how the parking is done on this first floor of the garage. You can see that the applicant has added pedestrian entrance here to satisfy one of the requests from the last hearing. This is the northwest corner of the building where it's across the street from the UVX stop. They've also moved around a couple of things. So there's, first floor, there's no really amenity space other than some storage. It's just entrance to the two different levels of the garage with some units on the west side. On the second level. Try to gather some anticipation for what the second level is going to look like here.
Drumroll.
There we go. Oops, we went one too far. Sorry. Here we go. All right, so the second floor starts the amenity space with this area here, a hot tub and recreation area. And then you've got your upper level parking entrance that kind of comes up. You'll see better once we get to the elevations and renderings. They've moved the bike storage and repair area from this corner, if you recall, at the last hearing. They've moved it down here, so it's adjacent to the trash room. It kind of makes more sense to have all those things located together rather than next to one of the residential units. And then the rest, the second level is just parking with some lobby and lease space here. Then on the third floor. You've got your large courtyards on either side, on the north and the south. And you'll really see how these are laid out in the renderings, so we'll kind of skip by this. The fourth and fifth floors are essentially identical. It's just a variety of units, one bed, two bed. And I believe it's just one bed and two bed on that, on those floors because the studios are on the first and second floors. And then on the sixth floor, once it catches up. You've got the club room here on the east side of the building. So at that level, you've got a view out the windows here of the mountains. So if we can go to the next slide, you'll see that elevations have been updated, showing the east and west. You see the door here on the northwest corner. Got your north and south elevations. So on the south, you've got these doors here to access the garbage. And you've got your new numbers here. So it breaks down your studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. These are kind of the numbers that the applicant spoke about last time, so then now they're represented on this chart. He's represented the parking stalls. As you read in the staff report, we feel that the, the different amenities with the bicycle facilities and proximity to campus and mass transit in East Bay justifies this minor reduction of 48 parking stalls in overall of 513. In addition to that, as you'll see on the next slide, there's going to be plenty of on-street parking on both sides of the street in case of overflow. And the applicant has also talked about, and he could speak to this again tonight, about parking overflow into the medical campus and into possibly the second phase holding area. That's all I have for now. This YouTube link is part of the applicant's presentation. And then he's got some more renderings here that he would like to take you through. So I'll just wait till you open it up to him for those.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ardmore?
Not for me.
Anyone else? Okay, if there are no questions at this time for staff, then I'll turn it over to our applicant, Mr. Sinks. And I understand you have a YouTube video for us and some additional information.
Well, this is not Todd, but I'm wondering if he's going to chime in. There he is. Okay. Is that Chris? Yeah, that, that's, I'm Chris, yes. But I see someone that's joined that's called Owner, so I'm wondering if that's Todd.
Okay. If it is, they're muted right now.
Well, I think as he's trying to figure out his audio, we could just go through the YouTube link. It's about a minute and a half. And then we have a couple still images of this that are derived from the video.
Okay. And this consultant, would you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Chris Huntsman, architect.
Thank you.
Something now is loading that video right now.
Great.
Can you guys hear me? Are my still muted?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Sinks.
Okay. Yeah, I was just gonna have Chris, the architect, oh yeah, go ahead and show you. So I should take care of all the questions and see in the north side and everything.
Looks like it just froze.
There we go.
Yeah, you don't need to watch that one.
Well, that was helpful.
We also have some still images for the commission to review if they would like. I think that was part of our application.
Yeah, I put those into the slides though, so if we can go back to that. We can kind of slide through those as you direct now, she can go to the next slide.
Okay, so we just really understood from, what I understood from last meeting, there were some, just, you know, we just needed to explain a little better what the project was entailing, how it was going to look, what the feel of it. So we just wanted to put together that quick animation to kind of give you an idea in 3D to kind of understand what we envisioned or what we have on paper right now. And so, so really, would love to hear if you have any questions for Todd and myself, and would love to address those. So we'll just, you know, kind of listen to what questions you have and concerns and try to address those with the conversation.
Did you want to do that before we go through your additional renderings? Did you want to do that before we go through your additional renderings?
If you'd like to flip through the renderings, I think, so this is, yeah, we can just spend a couple of minutes on, not minutes on them, but just, this is on that sixth level inside the club room. We actually have two club rooms on the sixth level, one looking towards the east. This is the east one, and then there's one also looking towards the west to get a view out to Utah Lake. So if you go to the next slide, there'll be a couple more images. So this is, again, that same club room. You go to the next one. And this is looking out, and you can kind of see that we photoshopped the mountain range in there. This is actually taken from a drone image that we had out on site, and you can see the tall building right across the street from there. So that's what the view would look like from there. You go to the next one. Here is the entrance into the middle of the project. We just wanted to show how we have this little, this ramp going up in that you can go down into the main level parking and then up and access the interior courtyard at the second level and into the parking. So we have another shot after this one. Go ahead. Oh, well, we bounced over to the front elevations. This is coming off that on-ramp, off-ramp, coming down headed towards the project site. Go to the next one. This is a view from inside the north courtyard looking down towards the south. It's a, you know, there's a tot lot barbecue pits on this level that's out in the open. Go ahead, next one. Here's just kind of giving you a night, an evening image on. This is the north facade. So I know there was a concern about the parking structure and maybe it wasn't communicated well, but we do have the parking structure enclosed. So that first two levels that you see as the podium, that's what the parking structure looks like. You don't see into and see cars. On this west facade going down the boulevard here, those are all the studio apartments, making it very pedestrian friendly. You have your own private entrance off of the street if you have one of those two-story lofts units there. You can go to the next slide. Here is, again, the north facade here on the, and looking down the east there. That's where the fire lane would be. This is a view into the central courtyard at the second level, and you can see the second tier up on the third level, the open courtyard here at the north. The glass that you see by the pool is for the fitness room looking out. So you got to put, you got a pool there, and we have a hot tub. This is a pickleball court on the south podium or the south courtyard. Couple outdoor barbecue pits and gathering areas out here, too. So there you go.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I think the visuals just clean up a lot of our mental concepts that we had last meeting, so I think they've been very helpful. Looks like a nice project.
Any other questions, comments, Ms. Wynden?
I did have a question. It's not about the amount of parking. I'm satisfied on that, especially with the memo that we got from the city council. But I have a question. On page four of the staff report, showing the attachment one site plan, and then it would continue with the attachment three. I'm going to assume that since we're hoping to encourage the residents here to use mass transit or, you know, bicycles and that sort of thing, that we're, there's going to be some apartments that don't have vehicles. So it wouldn't make sense to have assigned parking stalls. With that being said, on the north end of the parking garage, how will, the only way that I can see that people would be able to, if they go all the way to the end of the stall looking for a parking spot and they don't, are not able to find one, they're going to have to back out. There's no place to turn around. And the same on the other levels. Am I not seeing something here? On the drawing? You can turn around.
I think you're correct, Ms. Wynden.
I think you're right. It's very crowded.
There's no zen room to back in or head in and turn around.
Right. So you would drive in, but if there, you can walk in and see if there's, you know, leave your car in park, walk up and see if there's a parking space, and then drive in if there's one. Or you can drive in, see if there's a parking space, but if there's not, then you're going to have to take your car out. And I kind of saw that was the same on the other parking levels. So I'm just wondering if you've built another facility like this and how, if that's been an issue, how you have addressed it? And also, on the same, on page four, the attachment one site plan, you've got the same dead end right next to the dog park. So they would drive all the way around and reach that dead end and then would have to back up again.
So do you want me to go ahead and answer that?
Sure, please.
Okay. So Jared, are you on? Jared Nielsen is the builder with Highmark Construction, and they've built a lot of these similar developments and had similar things. Jared, do you want to kind of tune in on this?
So I'm Jared Nielsen. I'm with Highmark Construction. We also develop and own projects similar to this. And in operations, we do actually assign the parking stalls. Typically, the one stall will come with the units. And then if someone does want a second stall, we rent it to them and actually assign those stalls. We found we have better success with assigning the stalls. That way, we can put parking as close to where their elevator is versus giving it free-for-all. And that typically has solved any issues with, you know, having a dead end or whatnot, because they know they have a stall that they can go down to and turn around or park into.
Okay, how do they get out of it once they parked in it, though?
Just back out and go.
It'd take quite a bit of maneuvering if you were up against the wall on the far north.
On the, on the north side, there's, if I remember right, Chris, there's two or three feet between the stall and the wall. On the one by the pep park, that's actually seven feet there. So there's gobs there on that one.
Yeah, so just to chime in, along grid line PAA is where the concern is that I see you're addressing. We do, we have just over two feet on that spot. The parking strips that are painted on here are four inches wide, plus we have two feet. And to your point, it could be a little tight, but it is doable with backing up into two feet, two feet, four inches.
I have a follow-up question.
Ms. Jensen?
He said that they would assign the stalls, which I think is a great idea. My one question with that is, what about visitor parking? Is there going to be some designated visitor parking, or are they just going to have to borrow the renters parking? How does that work?
So typically, all of the surface parking that's in the courtyard, we will keep that as visitor parking. And then usually, if we need more than that, we will keep an area open for that elsewhere in the building, you know, in the parking garage. We typically, where the residents actually park, we typically will have secured access in and out of those areas. So the guests would not have access to the majority of the parking lot or the parking garage.
There's, there's one other spot. We have the on-street parking that we don't get a count into our calculations for this ratio. There's 15 or 18 stalls out on the street also that's on-street parking.
Mr. Howard, did you have a question?
Yes, please. I would like to know if you're going to have an onsite manager.
Absolutely. There will be onsite manager and onsite maintenance full-time.
Okay, I think that helps mitigate a lot of these potential issues, or should. I mean, if you have a good manager.
So a site this size, we typically will have two, two full-time people in the office, manager and a leasing person, and then typically there'll be two maintenance that take care of, you know, cleaning, keeping corridors clean, the parking garages clean, maintaining the facility. A facility this size typically will have four people total onsite.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants?
I have a question and also comment. Comment first. Thank you for putting that door on the northwest corner. I think that was my concern last time. And then the issue came up at our last meeting about airflow on the first level of the parking garage. It looks like it's enclosed on three sides. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to that, Jared. And you can chime in if I, you correct me if I'm wrong on anything, any of this. So this will have to be mechanically vented. There will be cross-ventilation provided through a mechanical fan that will turn on when it is needed and pull air through there. It is not an open parking structure that could be, you know, naturally ventilated through there.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment and say that having the additional pictures and the YouTube, that helped me to visualize it a little bit better and get a better picture for the project. Appreciate that.
Welcome.
Sorry, I was muted, wasn't I? I was just saying, I appreciate having the visuals as well. It helps with the decision-making for all of the commissioners.
That's a fact.
I have a clarifying question about the studio apartments.
Yes, Ms. Jensen.
The, the elevations show that there's windows all along that facade on the west side. Are those two different units? So the, the series of five windows is one unit, and the series of four smaller windows is another unit upstairs? Or is it an up and down?
If we're talking about the main level, like you can see here in the brick, that's actually a two-story unit, a one-bedroom or a studio loft unit. So it has, you have an interior stair just for that unit to get in there.
Okay. So the series of windows is both, they're both for the same, how, the same unit?
Correct. We have a larger, almost like a storefront-looking window on the bottom level, then the two for the bedrooms upstairs and the open area.
And do those look directly into the living area?
Do, yeah, this, the bottom level is into the living area, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? I'm not seeing any. So thank you to the applicants, and I will now open up item two to public comment and ask our administrator whether we have any comments that have come in this evening on item two.
Yes, I, we have some written comments. The first, first one is from Micah Wheatley of Provo. And he says, with 736 units, is it sufficient to have only 500-plus parking stalls? And then we have another comment. This is from R. Paul Evans of Provo, and he says, "Where is a copy of the memo from Provo City Municipal Council to the Provo City Planning Commission regarding parking as mentioned by Commission Member Wynden?"
Do you want me to comment on that right now?
Let's see if there are any other comments first.
Well, let's give them a few minutes. There is that lag. Let's see if there's any more comments come in.
Great, thank you. Just let us know. I think I'm seeing a couple of comments on YouTube. Are those going to be read in later?
We're not reading the YouTube comments. We have a different way of adding in the written comments. And so we have put a disclaimer on the YouTube comments that comments made on the live stream will not be read to the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not getting any more comments.
Great, thank you, Rachel. All right, I will ask the applicant if he would like to respond to any, either of those comments that were just read through.
So the one where he asked about the parking and the seven, so he's confused because the total project has been approved for 735 units. But we're dealing only in phase one right now. Phase one is only 325 units, and we have 516 parking for just those 325. So he was confusing the total project with just phase one parking.
Thank you.
And I forgot what the other comment was.
It concerned staff, I believe.
Okay.
All right, we'll close this portion of the hearing to public comment then and turn item two back over to the commissioners. And actually, I'll ask staff if they wanted to respond to Mr. Evans' comment. And that concerned the memorandum from council.
The number was sent by council leadership to the planning commission regarding these requests for parking reductions. Mr. Evans, I can make sure that we send you a copy of that if you would like.
Thank you. And it was a general memorandum. It didn't concern any specific projects. All right, I will turn it back over to commissioners then for further discussion, questions, comments, motions.
I have a comment. The windows on the loft units, I'm a little bit concerned. I really like the project as a whole, but with those west-facing windows, especially when there is not going to be phase two, are just going to invite a lot of greenhouse effect in those particular units during the summer. And I'm concerned if that, if there's anything to mitigate that or if there's any attention to that impact in the desirability of those units.
I could address that. We would have a high, well, low solar heat gain windows and a low U-value window. So those would be high-performance windows there to help mitigate that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners, comments?
Mine's more of an observation, just to make sure that we realize what's changed or not. When we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, there were 325 units with 520 parking stalls, and this proposal has 325 units with 513 parking stalls. And this proposal has three hundred and twenty-five units with five hundred and thirteen parking stalls. So it's not a huge difference, but considering that one of our reasons for continuing was that I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I personally feel that having thought more about the parking situation, there's no neighborhood to overflow. Um, there's a a continue, there's other phases that can absorb the need for parking when we review them. Um, so I I'm not as bothered by it, but I just wanted to point that out so that that was noted that it actually got worse than it was last time when we continued it. That's all.
Thank you for that comment. I agree, we really focused on that last time and and a few other items. Um, but I think with the the ability to park overflow on vacant land across from the site or on the campus, uh, I think that helps alleviate some of the parking concerns.
I really liked the verbal description too of how similar developments have been parked in the past so that we can sort of visualize that there will be accommodations for visitor parking and other things we were worried about last time.
Right.
I concur, and I think the visual presentation clears up the the concept of the uh birthday cake kind of layers there present. I'm in favor of the project.
Any other comments, commissioners? I I I agree that the 3D renderings uh were extremely helpful for us to understand how the project stacks up and how how the different layers come together.
I agree, and I, at least from the 3D rendering, it seems like the interior courtyards are a lot more spacious than I was imagining uh after the first presentation.
I'd like to know what Mr. Anderson feels about the parking situation since he was very concerned about it last time, as I was too. Is that unfair to call you out, Dave?
Not at all. Um, just to be quick and candid, my thoughts haven't changed. Mostly, I think my concerns have to do with the geography of the site. It's remote from everything. Um, I think the likelihood that people aren't gonna find a need to have access to a vehicle on a pretty regular basis if they reside here um is pretty slim. And I think folks that can afford to pay contemporary rents in a development like this, they're gonna be able to afford uh a vehicle and the demand for uh parking is gonna be, if anything, I think higher here than it would be several other places in the community. So and I I appreciate the concept of allowing for parking reductions for a variety of reasons. I don't think they really are applicable here. I felt the same way about the developments where we've talked about parking reductions along South State Street. So that's where I'm at.
I have a comment um to go along with that. I think that I think that mistakes have been made um with other projects, but I think that there's a unique opportunity here that we don't get very often. And that is that if this proves to not uh give enough parking with phase one, we know that there is going to be addition, there can be additional parking across the street. And that phase two, when it's built, um, we've been told that they will incorporate any additional parking that's needed. We don't get that opportunity very often with projects in Provo. Usually, there's just one project. That's it. There's no phase one, phase two. So it'll be interesting to see um if this reduced parking and giving, having the additional bicycle facilities, having such close proximity to uh UVX. If it has the desired outcome, it 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 will be an interesting experiment. If it doesn't, then it enlightens us to whether or not we want to continue doing this for future projects. And it gives us a recourse when this developer comes back with phase two.
It's a good point.
That's an excellent point, Ms. Wynden, and I was thinking I was thinking in the same terms, if if phase two indeed does occur and if it is proven over time that there is a parking shortage in phase one, phase two, I'm sure they'll also want a parking reduction for the same justifications or similar. And if it hasn't worked and it it is insufficient for phase one, we'll be able to uh ameliorate that in phase two.
I just I'm I'm torn about this because I have never seen a housing project that has been overparked. I think that the intent of reducing parking is really great for commercial uses and um place things where people are likely to commute. But I just, I just keep going back to my original thought that people move in with cars. And if you do the math, uh, you know, just a a guessing of of the occupancy of these units, if you just put one person in each bedroom and account for some of those being couples, you you need five hundred and twenty-four spots. So that's just for the people who live there. And I know there'll be some people who don't have cars, but I just, I'm almost I don't want to be the bad guy, but I'd almost rather overpark this one. And then if we were wrong about that, then we could grant it on the next one instead of the other way around, where it sends the message that anyone can ask for an exception and we'll give it to them. I feel like they've shown it. They've they've answered a lot of our questions, but I'm just really worried about people have cars, even people who like mass transit like myself have cars to get places that they can't reach with mass transit. So I like to ride my bike. I like to take the bus or the train whenever I can, but I own a car for the times that I can't get there by bike or train. So I I just hesitate to set, to send a message that it's okay to pack as many in and not give them enough parking spots. And maybe I'm being ridiculous on that, but those are my worries. That's all.
Well said. Any other questions, comments?
I guess the other thing, okay, I said I was done. Look at me, I'm going again. The other thing to consider is that unlike other projects we've seen, there is no neighborhood for this to overflow into. So that might be one reason to consider an exception where we wouldn't otherwise. That there's less impact on people who would be living around them.
You know, I think the parking issue will be borne out. I I don't think any of the parking concerns are are uh out of place. I think they're very valid. I I I think the thing that allows me to 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 give a nod in this is given that it's uh going to be primarily aimed at that school that's gonna go next to it. And um I I think there's gonna be adequate parking, but I we'll have to see when phase two comes along as as I think we should approve this.
I think that Ms. Jensen's point that there's no neighborhood uh near this for the parking to spill into, I think that that's another thing to take into consideration that if the parking on this project is not adequate, it will be easy to see
Yeah.
there's a lot of vehicles spillage onto the streets. They won't be able to say, oh, it's the neighbors, because there are no neighbors. Um, so I think that that would be a very quick check, just to drive around and see are there a lot of cars parked on the street because they can't get parking in the garage underground.
And there's also the potential that the adjacent commercial uses, if somebody tries to use their parking lots, um, there might be some blowback from those commercial owners, and we would certainly become aware of it that way.
Mm-hmm.
I would certainly.
Again, that would punish. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I would hope that when um phase two happens um and it comes back before us, that there would be data on the parking that would be provided so that we would have some more substantial feelings about whether or not this is really working.
I would count on staff to provide that to us and the owner.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Howard?
I'd I'd like to move that we approve a project plan approval for a three hundred and twenty-five unit apartment complex located at one seventy-eight East, eighteen sixty South in the campus mixed-use zone as presented as item two.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Do we have a second to Mr. Howard's motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Wynden. All those in favor of approving item two. Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Nay.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
And Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Was that a nay?
Yes, nay.
Thank you. And Ms. Jensen, myself, aye. So that's two nays. And five yays. So the motion passes. Item two is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, item three. We all received uh about a week ago, before I read the item in, uh, a parking or transportation demand manager management program uh prepared for for the applicant Brigham Young University. And I just want to acknowledge that we've all received that and had an opportunity to review it in advance of the hearing. And so item three. Michael Davis requests project plan approval for a four-story school of music building, one hundred and seventy-one thousand square feet, located approximately eight hundred east, ten sixty north, in the public facility zone. This is the university neighborhood, and Mr. Ardmore will present item three.
Thank you. So uh, once again, I'm gonna quickly go through the project details of the site plan and elevations here, as the main questions with this one were parking. So if you can go to the next slide, let's see. So here's the area along Campus Lane and nine hundred east, uh currently parking lot. Here's the proposed building, uh new music building for uh classrooms and performances. Here's the elevations, uh so all this is the same as what you saw last time. Then again, with the floor plans, I just had them in here in case you guys have any specific questions um on these levels. Uh, the main difference, as you noted, Ms. Jensen, is the Transportation Demand Management Program, uh the study that was provided by Hales Engineering uh that you all received a copy of along with a memo from staff. Uh, staff reviewed this report, um found it to be uh a good report, found the parking to be sufficient on a campus-wide system. Um, so we looked at this in two ways. One way is just at the music hall, so this, that's what you're seeing on this slide. Um, code standards, typically, we would have applied probably the high school uh standard because there is no standard in our code currently for university. Uh, so you can see in this slide that one thousand sixty-five stalls would be required. And our alternative way of looking at it is just the headcount of faculty and students. Uh, it actually drops the number. And the way the parking study looks at it is just a five-minute walking distance around the building that would be built. Uh, there would be two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight stalls provided, and you could see how that kind of plays out right now during construction and then after this is all done with the reduction of parking spaces for the building and then the addition of uh parking spaces adjacent to. Um, I'm gonna highlight some of the things from the report. Uh, we have members of BYU sit next to me, which will uh go over the report much better than I could. Uh, so more in-depth uh reporting of this report will come after me, but uh you could see in the TDU programs, the existing uh management strategies they have uh with transit and active transportation and the non-student housing. And then they've broken it down by uh percentages by what they've seen on campus. And then you got here a breakdown of the people on campus, uh students, employees, uh full-time and part-time, classrooms, square footage of the building spaces, and then um how they've supplied parking around campus. And then I thought these two maps uh were helpful to show, to kind of pull out of the report. Uh, so this is the the BYU campus here. Uh, all the colored segments, colored blocks are different types of parking in and around campus with the uh blue circle indicating a five-minute walk and a green circle indicating a ten-minute walk. So it's it's showing that it's it's a walkable campus, kind of no matter where you park, uh you're no more than ten minutes away from from where you're going to. And then again, with the transit map, uh with combination of UVX and the ride system that they have, uh the coverage on every side of campus is is pretty well-covered. Uh, people can get on and off uh pretty close within a five to ten-minute walk of any classroom or or facility that they need. Um, so that's all I have on that. This, there's not a lot of new information, more than the report that you received. Um, I I know that the BYU staff here has a presentation to go through, so I'll leave more time for them. No. Anyone no?
Yes.
Sorry, I was muted.
Um, no, we we need to share one of our screens up here.
Uh-huh, go ahead.
Okay, I don't see an option to do that.
Um, you can just go ahead and share. You don't need permission. What led you?
Yeah, I don't have the the menu for Zoom. Maybe I can get it if I do this. Hold on.
I'm sorry I was muted. I was trying to ask the commissioners if they uh had any questions or staff. And I actually do have one.
Go ahead.
Uh, you'd mentioned briefly the code requirements uh for the number of parking spaces, and I noticed on the floor plans for the uh music building, there are five performance venues. And uh was curious whether or not you have a code requirement for parking for auditorium-type spaces like that. Because that could generate quite a bit of demand.
Um, we don't have a specific requirement for that type of use. Um, that's that's something that we're trying to update right now, um but currently there is no requirement.
Go ahead and share your screen, Aaron.
Yeah, I've got it now.
So for example, even for the Covey Center, there's not a parking requirement for or a parking code requirement for assembly and uh auditorium spaces?
Um, I'd have to.
Or the Convention Center?
I'd have to look into that and get back to you, Ms. Jensen. We can have the answer by uh the end of the applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff, commissioners? Any other questions for staff, commissioners?
You know, maybe I need a little bit of hand-holding here. It seems like the real question relative to the proposed music school has to do with performances. And kind of peak hour, peak, peaks maybe not the right way to put it, but situations that are kind of unique from a timing perspective. And, you know, maybe increased demand for parking when there's a lot of activity in that facility. Does that make sense? Versus maybe just day in and day out, eight to five concerns about there being sufficient parking?
That goes along with what I was trying to get at with the five performance venues that are located in the building, that that could be an issue.
I'll bring up that there's another performance venue that is just, oh, it's going to be, I don't know, it's across a building in a parking lot, but that, I believe, in the Fine Arts Center, the venues would hold up to 4,000 people. I know one of them's over 2,000, and another one is close to 1,000, and then there are three more that I can think of. So we're really talking about 5,000 people potentially looking at those parking spaces, and that would be my concern.
Deborah, before we turn it over to BYU, I can give you what the section has for similar type uses?
Thank you.
So there's one for amusement, which would be five spaces per 1,000 square feet. And the next most comparable use would be a movie theater, which is one per four seats.
It seems to me that one of the key issues, I mean, from a numbers perspective, I don't necessarily disagree that there's adequate parking on campus, let's say, for everything that goes on on campus at differing hours of the day and different days of the week and that type of a thing. But much of the parking is so remote from some of the facilities that generate significant demand for parking. I'd be particularly interested to hear about any things that the university would do to try to, you know, realistically maybe use the parking that's west of the football stadium or different things like that, when they have potentially thousands of visitors in this part of the campus or to this part of the campus ultimately for performances or anything, so that we have some assurance that those folks aren't going to do what I think intuitively, I'll say I certainly would, from a convenience perspective, I intuitively would look to the neighborhood to the east for available parking. And, you know, I'd hate to see the city have to step up its parking enforcement regulations, or to see the residents of that neighborhood deal with additional parking permitting or parking restrictions of their own to deal with impacts that are created by this facility near 9th East.
I agree. I think that if you just do numbers and and do the math, then we could walk away from this conversation, but many of the people who come to those evening performances show up either right on time or five minutes early, and they are not students, so they don't have access to the ride or a free transit pass. So it's going to take, yeah, the ideal is to train them to do that, but it'll take a while, and in the meantime, it's going to overflow somewhere. And there's simply, I just don't see a lot of proximal parking for these two venues that have such a high evening draw.
I think what I was really hoping we would see today, I appreciate the TDM study that was completed, but what I was really hoping to see was a physical map of the campus, excuse me, with a location of where this parking is going to happen and how people are going to be shuttled to it. So really, a plan of how you're going to accommodate parking for those facility, or for that facility when there's activities going on.
Ms. Jensen, I think some of these questions will be answered during BYU's presentation.
Great. Do we have any other questions or comments for staff at this time? Okay, great. Then I will ask Mr. Davis to present his music building project.
Thank you. I'm Eric Davis. I'm not Michael Davis. But I'm here representing BYU. I'm attorney in the office of the General Counsel. And I just wanted to sort of frame this project a little bit. There are a number of people here with me from the university tonight, and also those who've helped us on the project. After I introduce them briefly, I'll turn the time over to Ryan Hales, who will go through the transportation management plan and hopefully answer questions, and I'll try to answer some of the questions that you've already asked. I appreciate the time that you've given us here. I appreciate your concern about these issues. These are issues that concern us as well. I recognize that you have an important job to do, making sure that buildings are built here and projects that are approved are going to work, and work not only for the developer, but for their neighbors and people around them, and so we will try to do our best to help you do that job, and provide you with the information you need in order to do that job well. The basic purpose of the music building is largely classroom space, right? So the daytime use, and and I think, I don't need to spend a lot of time on that, because I think that transportation demand management plan explains very well how that will be handled, and it sounds like you don't have a lot more questions about that. But it is also a performance venue, as you've noted, and the School of Music brings world-class performers to Provo and for performances currently in the Harris Fine Arts Center, and some of those would then, would in the future be held in the School of Music Building here. I think that there are some assumptions made about the kind of crowds that get drawn to those venues. Currently, the largest venue in the Harris Fine Arts Center is the Dion Concert Hall, which holds a total of 1,268, has 1,268 seats. And the rate of sellout at that venue is about 20%, so about 20% of the performances that happen in the Dion Concert Hall are sellouts. So in general, the crowds coming to an event at the Dion will be significantly less than 1,000, or around 1,000, but at the maximum, 1,268, so that's the capacity of that particular venue. As you rightly know, there are other venues in the Harris Fine Arts Center, but there, the the School of Communications and, or the College of Finance and Communications is very much aware of the potential problems of creating conflicts by scheduling multiple events at the same time in those venues, and it's not only a problem for parking, but it's a problem for crowd control, and it's a, it's a problem financially for them if they were to do that, because they're, then they have ticket sales to do, and they're competing against themselves if they try to sell out different venues on the same night at the same time. It's also a problem academically, because the students and members of the School of Music are required to attend these events, and if they've got another, number of other events that they're doing at the same time, they're not able to attend. So so they're extremely aware. This is something that they think about all the time, is not creating scheduling conflicts with performances in the evening. And the School of Music would continue to be in charge of scheduling both the Harris Fine Arts Center and the School of Music Building, so they would they would continue to exercise that control to ensure that there aren't those kinds of conflicts that bring you know, 5,000 people, even 2,000 is unrealistic in terms of the numbers of people who would be attending events in the evening at the School of Music and/or the Harris Fine Arts Center. More like 1,000 is probably the more realistic number. The other thing that should be communicated, I guess, is that while you're right that we can't control where everyone who comes to an event parks, we do what we can, right? So we, when tickets are sent out to patrons who are coming to an event, they're told where the BYU parking is, and given maps and directions to parking. We never direct people to park in residential areas, or to even look into residential areas, or would never, would direct someone to park in an area where they have to cross the nature through a fair to get to a performance, so we do what we can there, and we're happy to cooperate with the city and any other kinds of things. I know that the signs that we put up in the neighborhoods beginning of the school year and during women's conference and education week, ask people not to park in the neighborhood have been, I think, pretty successful in, and and the people have respected that, but we're open to other kinds of ideas or suggestions that there might be. The, in terms of my understanding of how the ordinance works, and I don't want to take much more time away from Ryan, but what we're asking for in providing a transportation demand management plan is not an exception so much as more of a tailored approach to parking. With parking, it's not a question of more is better. You don't want to have just endless parking. You want to have the right amount of parking for your needs, and our, Ryan Hales and Hales Engineering has been extremely helpful for us in identifying peak demands and needs and the use of alternative means and everything else that help us get that tailored fit for parking, rather than, rather than just overparking, as, and you're aware of that, not being sorry. I hope to allow us to answer any questions you have as well, but I am going to turn the time over now to Ryan, and if there's, if you have any questions about what I've said so far, I'm happy to do my best to answer those questions as well.
Perfect. Commissioners, my name is Ryan Hales from Hales Engineering. We prepared the Transportation Demand Management Program. I hope you'll bear with me for just a couple of minutes as I go through that. I don't mean to shortchange anybody that's on the phone that may not have had a chance to look at it today. What I do want to do is just cover in brevity a couple of the items that are key points, and then we'll go into we're going to a couple of questions. I think I can answer a couple of questions that have been asked already, and I hope that through the presentation, I might be able to answer a couple of more. There are 17 slides total in this presentation, and it will be very similar to the report that you read. But for those who are on the phone that have not had a chance to see the report, it will be new information to them. As I go through the slides, free to stop and ask any questions as I proceed through them. I'm trying to get it to advance. Hopefully, you can see the next slide. I'm going to start off by talking about the outline of where we're headed. I'll be very brief in my discussion on this as I go through the slides again. I don't want to belabor this too much, but the purpose of this was to come in to evaluate what is currently happening on BYU's campus. As far as the TDM program, there are many things that are occurring with public transit shuttles, active transportation between bikes and pedestrians, and we wanted to help quantify that to understand how much, number one, how much is occurring, and number two, how that affects the parking needs on campus. Again, we don't want to create a sea of parking in asphalt that sits empty most of the time. So we're trying to balance that, and trying to balance the campus needs for buildings and basically connectivity between the campus buildings. As people travel in via shuttle or transit or whatever it might be, we want to make sure there are stops that are close and convenient, and we'll see that as we go through this presentation. I do want to mention that the existing conditions, we had a lot of great information on this gathered, not only from Provo City, but from BYU, from UTA, and from the right. I want to acknowledge each one of those entities for the data that they've supplied to us. In order to complete a study of this magnitude, we needed a lot of data, and we got it. Hopefully, we summarize it well in this report, and I hope to go through that with you. The parking demand, we'll talk about that as well, and then TDM strategies, and then we've got a couple of next steps that we do want to discuss as well. Again, I'll try to be brief in my comments and move through this fairly quickly. Beginning with the purpose, I think you're all familiar with the code and what it says in 1437.50. Talking about the Transportation Demand Management Program, most of what we've done is we've tried to go in and look at this. I'm not going to read each one of these bullets. I apologize. I know you've seen them in your report. I don't want to prolong them. But there is an idea and concepts that are identified within the TDM program. They are listed here on the screen, six or seven of those. And then the Parking Justification Study. As we went through this study and looked back at some of these bullet points, we wanted to make sure we were trying to include as many of them as we can to make that program as robust as we can. There are currently a lot of things that are occurring on campus right now. As we've already mentioned, the ride and UTA and their stops. We'll show a couple of maps showing where those are at. The bike program. The bike program is amazing. There are many bike parking areas on campus, as well as stations where they can fix bikes. In addition to that, there's also a lot of trails and paths that lead towards campus. Most of the residential housing is south of campus for those that are off-student housing. There are some onsite housing complexes as well, provide some great walking abilities. Again, you have seen some of the numbers from this slide. I would just point out in brevity, there are 33,511 students currently, well, I think the semester's over, enrolled on campus at any given time, but this is a good snapshot of what is occurring. We have 550 scheduled classrooms on campus and approximately 4.7 million net square feet out of a 7.5 million gross square feet. That's a lot of buildings, that's a lot of people, and helping them circulate and navigate around campus and through Provo is a top priority for BYU and Provo City both. As far as the parking supply, we have broken down the number of stalls. There are 14,402 parking stalls on campus for education purposes. There are a little bit more than that, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But of the, of the overall total, 14,402, that's broken down into the A, G, R, T, U, V, and Y lots. Those are designated for faculty and staff, for graduate students, restricted stalls, and then time stalls are the T, the U are free stalls, and then V stalls and Y stalls for students. Looking at the overall area and what that looks like, I think you've seen this map already, but within that central core of the BYU campus, that core being the Harold B. Lee Library, within about a five-minute walk, there are 5,400 stalls. Within 10 minutes, there are 10,500 stalls. It just gives you a good idea of how the campus has changed and morphed in the last several years to be more of a campus-centered university, where people come in, once they get inside of campus, they just walk between the buildings. There are not a lot of roads crossing through campus by any means, and that's on purpose. It's to keep the pedestrians safe and to keep the bicyclists moving. Without traffic, things flow fairly well through campus, and that was the intent. That was created on purpose. Within the parking supply, this table shows basically a comparison between many different universities. In the far left-hand side, you can see that we've looked at schools that are here in Utah and compared those rates. BYU comes in on the very end on the left side at a 0.58 stall per student. If you look across the board, you can see the many different universities in Utah, the four that are here, and then the ones that are outside of Utah. These were taken from a study at Kansas State University that they completed, and we've just replicated them here. Give them credit for it. But they looked at different universities and how they park. There are several lines in this graph, two horizontal lines in particular that I want to point out. One is the average, the orange line that is on the top, the average of all of these different studies combined and what that average would look like. The second line, and a little bit lower, is a green line, and that is the ITE 85th percentile. ITE stands for the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and in their studies, they have gone out and they looked at 13 different universities, and they look at all the stalls that are utilized, and they quantify that in their Parking Generation Manual. When they look at the, they look at average, they look at 85th percentile, they look at 95th, but the 85th percentile is the recommendation out of that manual to be able to park. You'll notice that BYU is currently parking above that 85th percentile line. I believe the number on the 85th percentile line is 0.45 stalls per student. BYU is 0.58 and above that line.
Is faculty parking considered in that number?
As far as I understand, I believe so. As far as I understand, I believe so. That is correct. I'm just looking at Josh to get the confirmation.
If you were an apartment complex, you'd have to give a stall per each student. That would be 40, 39,000 stalls.
That would be. That would be a lot of stalls. Definitely, we don't want to, we don't want to overpark this, and that's why there's different things such as the Rite and Transit, UTA, UVX. A lot of walking is occurring, and a lot of biking is occurring to campus. So we actually can decrease that need for stalls. If you look at how BYU has increased parking over time at the bottom of this graph, you can see how it has increased steadily year in and year out to kind of match student counts and enrollments as things have occurred, with a total of 19,011 stalls total on campus. Now, again, we talked about the 14,402. Those are the stalls that are being used by the students and the faculty under current conditions. There's additional stalls located at the MTC, the Missionary Training Center, as well as at some of the on-campus student housing projects. So that brings the total up, but we're concentrating on that 1402 right now. As far as active transportation, this is a great graphic to kind of show what's happening with the active transportation. There are 4,061 on-campus bike parking stalls with repair stations at some of those locations. Every location does not have a bike repair, but there's a lot of stalls on campus. It's estimated that there's about 3,000 students who are biking to campus on a daily basis with about 15,000 students who are walking. That's about, again, 18,000 total. There are some key walking routes that are also utilized as well as key bike routes. I won't belabor it and go through each one of those, but you can see the lines on the map basically showing the routes that lead towards campus and get people into that central core. As far as public transit is concerned with UTA, and I'll go ahead and click the next slide so you can start digesting some of that information. There are 2,000-plus riders on UTA per day that are BYU students. Most of those are on the UVX route as they come into campus, but there are two other bus routes that service the campus vicinity. That is the 822 and the 831. Currently, it's free to students. BYU made a substantial donation to UTA, so it would be students, faculty, staff, and dependents. So they've really opened that very broadly to get a lot of riders on these routes. So you can see the campus stops and where they're located around campus. There's a five-minute walk radius around each one. Some of you are very familiar with transit and how it works. In most cases, we look at transit as being a 15-minute walk. People will walk 15 minutes to get transit. We wanted to show a five-minute circle to show the coverage just around campus more specifically. When we look at the Rite and what it does, the Rite as well has a very similar map with multiple other stops. There are currently six shuttle routes. They're collecting about 4,000 riders per day. Again, they're doing some heavy lifting around campus, picking up a lot of these students and bringing them to campus. With these stops, it is also a free service for students. If they show their BYU ID, they can get on the ride and get off at any of the stops they want. You can see the routes extend from campus, the six different routes, bringing people towards campus from employment and housing centers that would be a desired path, and they've done well with these routes. If you look at the combined transit coverage, we have some very, very good coverage. Within a five-minute walk, these are all measured from the UVX and the Rite as we've previously spoken about. Overall, we have a very good on- and off-campus coverage. There are certainly opportunities to improve. There's a little bit of hole, a-hole in the map, kind of in this central area, but this is down towards the sports complex, down where you've got the Richards Building and the Smith Fieldhouse. So that's kind of the general area that we're looking at. So it's on the lower side of campus, just down the hill. As far as alternative modes, in addition to the bikes and the walking, there's also a car share program on campus. It's the Run Through Enterprise. There are bike rentals on campus. Many of you are familiar with that as well. There are many golf carts and gym carts that run around campus, moving people around without getting them out on the roadway system. They can be on campus and mobile. There's a lot of motorcycle and scooter parking. I believe it was over 1,300 stalls of just motorcycle and scooter parking close to some of the destinations where these people want to go. Designated loading zones, there are certainly many around campus. The Wilkinson Center would be one that I would point out, many of you are familiar with, and others around campus. The campus also has vehicles and vans for people to travel, whether it's a group going out to do a tour. I was a participant in a couple of tours, and we went out in vans and surveyed sites and then returned to the campus. Proximity to public recreation areas, we're very close to the mountains. There are things to do. People can use outdoors unlimited at BYU. They can go up and get a kayak. They can get bikes. They can rent many different forms of alternative transit. There's also proximity to commercial services. There are many commercial services around. Smith's is fairly close to campus. With the shuttles, you can get up to, you can get up to the mall fairly quickly. You can get down to the mall south of campus fairly quickly. So two malls in good proximity and other commercial areas. As far as parking demand, these graphics will be very similar. I don't want to go through each one of them, but I do want to point out the percentage of mode share for each one of the different modes that we've looked at, including transit shuttles, walking, biking, and vehicles. In essence, there are 11,715 parking vehicles or peak vehicles on campus for any given time for education purposes. Again, with the 14,402 stalls that are available on campus, there's an excess parking of 2,687 stalls. That does not include the motorcycle and scooter stalls that are available around campus in various different areas. In some of the alternative, well, for the alternative scenario and looking at the music building, I just want to point out, and this may address some of the questions that are being asked, and I'll continue to follow up with some other numbers. But when we look at the music building, it will eliminate 262 parking stalls where the footprint of the building will sit over the top of where those stalls once were located. There are 489 stalls that are unavailable during construction. That's because of the construction staging area, and then the potential to add about 130 stalls in other locations near the completion of the building. Some of those are near the HVAC and south of Campus Lane, so they will be in proximity to the building itself. You've seen this graphic previously in the city's presentation, but just to reiterate, by the time all is said and done, we know that we'll have education parking stalls, 14,270. That is including the additional 130 stalls that we've spoken about up here previously. With a demand of 11,715 stalls, we still have excess of 2,555 stalls. As far as the TDM strategies that are currently occurring, we talked about the subsidized UTA transit passes for campus students, faculty, and dependents, the on-campus stops and stations that are in proximity to campus, the Rite shuttle, free passes for the Rite for all of the students, shuttle stops being located near large student complexes and in popular areas where the students want to be. So we're really moving, the Rite is moving a lot of people, and we're grateful for that service. Active transportation, there's other active transportation components that are occurring. Definitely, there's a lot of walking routes on campus where students can walk between the buildings. Again, as we've discussed, there's not a lot of vehicles traversing campus. BYU's done a very good job of making it a pedestrian campus. The on-campus bike storage and repair stations help students travel back and forth. The on- and off-campus bike pass, there are many that lead towards campus. It's anticipated that there are about 18,000 students, about 3,000 are biking, 15,000 are walking. That's 18,000 students, which are, again, very helpful. They're not driving to campus. 45 locations for the bike parking with 4,000-plus stalls. And then some of the other things that are occurring, there is a paid student parking on campus. There are about 8,000 stalls that are available for permits that can be purchased. About 75% of those are purchased each year, about 6,060. So they are being utilized and students are purchasing those stalls. The car share program that we mentioned, the motorcycle and scooter parking, campus vehicles, and loading zones. On an anecdotal note, I worked with a couple of students on campus, and they were using their scooters to drive right up near where their classrooms were. So they would pull up, they could park very quickly, get into their program. They were not leaving, they didn't have to leave too early because there were plenty of stalls available in the scooter parking. So that and motorcycle parking is becoming more and more popular as that demand increases and students are finding out more about it. We did have some recommended strategies for the transit. We talked about considering the construction of another UVX station, one that would be near campus, likely on 900 East. That would be something that would be, that should be considered. It would bring additional people towards campus and give them good access into campus as well. And then we've talked about continuing to promote the access to UTA transit service, and then shuttles for the Rite, continue to analyze and evaluate the stop locations to provide good coverage. That hole in the coverage that we spoke about is one that we may be looking at here in the future, depending on how that works and if the Rite can accommodate that. But that's an example of one of the things that we can continue to look at. And then collaborating with the Rite to add signing at the stop locations and just making it more prevalent for the students. We want them to know where it is and how to get there quickly. Active transportation, it's been identified, there's been a couple of crashes south of campus, and so BYU will continue to work with Provo City to improve the safety of some of those pedestrian crossings south of campus. I think there are some locations where it may not be well-lit and a couple of locations where other improvements could occur that would increase the safety. So it's kind of an ongoing process. And then we've also recommended that we continue to add bike parking to be appropriate with the changes that are made on campus as buildings come online or drop offline, to make sure that there's more than adequate bike parking on campus as well. As far as the next steps, it's about implementing the recommended TDM strategies when possible so that we can make sure that the campus evolves in general. We don't want to become stagnant, but we always want to be looking at this and making sure that, number one, safety is a priority, and number two, that access and accessibility to transit, walking, biking, and all of those alternative modes are met. We want to make sure we develop a system to collect and monitor the data as it comes in, whether that's parking data or bike data, just to make sure that we're collecting that data on an annual basis as suggested in the TDM program. And then we'll continue to review that parking adequacy to make sure that we're always north of that target goal, to make sure that we always have a little more parking than needed, but not that we're overly parked to the point that we have a lot of empty stalls at all times of the day. And then the last recommendation, and I'll go into some of the numbers after this last recommendation, but it's consider and evaluate the need of, and feasibility of following potential TDM measures. The last three measures that we identified were additional shuttle stops near the outer student parking areas. We just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to catch transit and ride it into campus so that we don't have cars coming into campus. When I say the outer areas, we're talking about additional locations where students congregate, whether it be a housing complex and project or something similar to that. And then carpool vehicle parking is something that we've spoken about and just starting to explore a little bit more. Certainly with the carpool parking, the idea would be to put carpool parking stalls near the buildings and close proximity to campus and prioritize those for students that are in carpools. And then electric vehicle charging stations, just looking at the feasibility and opportunity for that as well. Commissioners, I believe that's the majority of this. Well, that is the slide presentation that we have this evening. I do want to jump in and talk about a couple of comments. Some great, great questions have come up, and I hope I can address those as I go through this. When we look at stalls within a five-minute walk radius of the music building, the HVAC, the Wilk, and the Law Building, there are actually 4,312 parking stalls. Of those 4,312 parking stalls, we looked at a five-minute walk radius of the music building, as we've already discussed. That was 2,328 stalls. That would leave the remainder of 1,984 stalls for additional parking of the other buildings. We recognize their shared use in these parking stalls. I think the question that came up was a time-of-day question about the music building and what that would look like during an event. I think Eric's done a very good job of discussing how they measure events and how they would run them within the music building. They don't want to have multiple events at the same time, and that is recognized. I do want to point out that most of those events occur after hours. Those are events that occur weekends, weekdays, but typically starting between, you know, 6 o'clock plus when the campus is vacating. So as those stalls go down from the student usage and there are more stalls available, that's when the venues do occur. If, and I'm only, I'm putting a big if on this, but if there were three venues occurring at the new music building, and we took the three event halls, that would be 1,461 seats using the one-to-four, so one vehicle for every four seats. That would equate to 365 vehicle parking stalls that would be needed. Again, we recognize that that will not occur because they don't cross over events and have multiple events occurring at the same time. But it just gives you an idea. 365 stalls would not be hard to find on any given day during that after-hour peak time when those events are occurring. In addition to that, as Eric has already stated, when a ticket is purchased online, they do forward parking areas and links so that everybody knows where to park. And with those, those parking maps and the stall availability, we do not foresee a problem with parking on campus for the venues in the music building in those conditions. Commissioners, if there are any other questions either on the presentation or questions that we can address, we'd be glad to do so at this time.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Just one. Do you have, you said that within a five-minute walk radius, that you've got adequate parking, and I don't recall the number that you just, you just said it. But do you have any idea how many tickets are sold to elderly people? When I've been there for performances, it seems like, I don't know what percentage, but a lot of people are elderly and maybe would have trouble with a five-minute walk. Maybe not, you know, a one- or two-minute walk, but a five-minute walk might be a little difficult for some of them. And so, you know, for that segment of our population, would there be adequate parking for their attendance?
Yes, great question. I appreciate the question. I'll let the architects or anybody else jump in after I talk about it for a minute. In close proximity to the area, there are 938 stalls right there near the music building that would still be available after the fact. I know there are quotas for handicap parking that the architects have to meet, and I'm sure that has been met on-site. And looking at that data, we think there's enough places for people to park, even if you needed to drop somebody off, they could be dropped off in close proximity to the building, and then a parking stall could be readily found. There are two drop-off spots actually around the music building, one on the north and one on the south side of that building.
At the two major entrances to the building. That's correct.
I'll also say anecdotally that I've been to events there and seen, yes, there is a large population of more elderly people there. But in my experience, the elderly people tend to get there earlier and get the best parking spots.
That's great.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Phillips?
You know, I had a chance to visit with some of the members of our Provo City Police Department, and they indicated that probably their number-one spot in Provo City for parking citations is, is north of 9th East in the area that we're just talking about right now. And that's with the existing parking lot as it is.
Right.
And in a normal day at BYU, not how it is today, but, but my question is how, I can, I can see how you've generated and shown us the parking stalls, but, but how are we going to get those people to utilize them and not go and disperse up into the neighborhoods and try to park closer and cut their walks in time shorter?
Yeah, great question. And as we continue to expand this TDM program, it's one of messaging and getting the message out to the students so they know that there's multiple ways to get around campus and that they don't need to park in those local streets. Obviously, BYU never promotes that. That would never be promoted, but we recognize that it does occur on occasion. We can't control all the students, but we try and control as many as we can, and we've provided facilities in a TDM program that will match that need and will continue to do so.
I don't know that, sorry.
I just, I know that the math makes it look like it's so beautiful and perfect, but I know that the reality is that the people who use the Law Building or wherever else on campus, they are the people who park in that Law Building parking lot. the people who use the law building or wherever else on campus, they are the people who park in that law building parking lot are staying there longer than seven PM or four PM or whenever the parking becomes, you know, supposedly available for others to use. And so even though there may only be one ticketed venue in, say, the HVAC in the Deon, there are three free recitals going on in the Madsen and, and other places. So yeah, they're not competing for ticket buyers, but those other venues are being used and they do fill up. So you add another building to that. And it's already the, the, already the law parking lot is full with a regular night's use. We're talking a Thursday night, not a Friday night. And people are parking all the way out by the Creamery in the law building because it's so full. So if you take five hundred of those spots away for construction, yes, I know two hundred and fifty of them will come back, but right now you can't take any of them away. Okay, minus the pandemic. You can't take any of them away on a, on a normal use day and, and have there be adequate parking that people are, are willing to park in. And so I know that there, you know, with the math, there's supposedly four thousand spots or at least nine hundred nearby spots, but my experience has been that that's not the reality because the people who have parked there earlier in the day are still there working late into the night. So those parking spots really aren't available.
Yeah, and we, we do recognize that there are some people that study late on campus. I was one of them as an engineering student on campus and recognize that frequently looking for parking stalls and people will navigate, um, where, where they feel they can walk closest. We think our program is set up in such a way that we can look at ways to educate people as we do this process, as we move through it and identify where those parking stalls are located. It'll be easy for them to pull up and say, you know what, this parking lot seems fairly full. We're going to work our way up, um, to another parking lot on BYU campus that is in a walkable area. They can do the drop-offs and go park the car frequently. When, uh, when I've taken my family to events, I will drop them off and then I end up parking the car myself and walking, walking solo. I've done that to many BYU football games. I've done it to basketball games. I've done it to events at the Dejean Concert Hall. So I, I know that does occur and we're just hoping to continue that education process. And the more we do, the, the more we will get people in the right lots.
Ryan, I think having the numbers be as favorable as they are, and I, I tried to say this earlier. I think campus-wide, you know, if we're looking at the parking area around the Marriott Center and the parking area around the football stadium and different things like that, as part of the mix of available parking, then I think it is, you can paint that picture that there's, there's ample parking for a university of this type and that sort of a thing, but, um, for me, it's much more so about how do you make the connection between, um, just proximity and make that enticing enough that, that people use the parking that's available instead of spilling over into the neighborhoods. Um, in my experience, the three hundred some parking stalls that you referenced that would be within a five-minute walk of the new music building, um, as a visitor to campus looking for a place where I can park and feel comfortable about not getting a ticket, the way those are advertised, um, they're few and far between. You know, lots that are clearly identified as, as being available for visitors and that type of a thing. Um, the absence of, you know, maybe some type of just on-campus shuttle to get people from, you know, the big lots that, that have the parking and, and the venues where, um, like was described, you know, maybe during a weeknight and that type of a thing. Um, the actual activities are occurring. You know, short of those types of things coming into play for me, just the overall numbers really don't matter that much because human beings do what they do. And I think, just speaking for myself, I think the only concern really that, that we have an opportunity here maybe to try to address now is the visitors that come to campus and how they get accommodated. So it's people that they won't generally learn a routine. Um, they're, you know, maybe one-off types of visitors for, uh, you know, one event a year or whatever that frequency might be. And making sure that, that they can be accommodated without impacting the neighborhood.
Yeah, and I, I do appreciate the comment, Dave, and I, I think you're, I, I understand what you're saying and where you're coming from. I agree, and we're taking all those steps to try and accommodate those people that are less frequent visitors. And it is the unfamiliar visitors that don't know and they try and rush to find a parking spot if they're late for an event. But we will do everything within our power to try and get them the information when they order a ticket online. There will be adequate time to send them ahead of time, the parking locations and where they need to be. We think that's a great step. This plan is a, a dynamic plan and we anticipate it will be dynamic as buildings come and go from campus. And we will continue to update the plan on a yearly basis as we know. And so there are some adjustments that, that might need to be made in the future, but we're looking at it right now and doing the best we can with the parking that we have, and we feel that we are sufficiently parked. But again, like, like you've asked, we are going to continue to monitor that and just have that check and balance.
Well, and maybe just let me kind of offer one other quick thought. And this just echoes what I think's already been said, and I, I think most of us, uh, participating in the discussion are really, really familiar with what the campus looks like day in and day out, where people park, where people don't park, you know, where there are vacant spaces and where there aren't. Um, we're talking here about eliminating spaces that I think go utilized almost all the time when the campus is up and running and functioning. Um, you know, so the idea, I, I think you're kind of describing Mission Impossible by suggesting that just monitoring, you know, with this, this change of how activities around the campus would be reorganized, um, that that's going to work, I think, uh, um, it would take a different method of operating in terms of how people get around campus. Um, it may be more so visitors than students, but, um, I'm not optimistic that this would happen and not, uh, again, have an adverse impact on the folks that live around it.
Uh, if, if I could make a comment, uh, my name's Lance Shields, I'm with HBS Architects. I'm the project manager for the School of Music project. Um, and I think one thing that hasn't been discussed that we should all remember is, uh, the, the Harris Fine Arts Building, uh, as we all know, is, has served the campus really well. It's an old building and, uh, is probably due to be replaced at some point. And, uh, what the university is, is trying to do, uh, in my understanding with the new music building is offload some of that program that currently exists within the Harris Fine Arts Building to the new School of Music. So we're not really adding, you know, evening performances or adding evening program or daytime program. It's, it's items that are already functioning within the Harris that we're offloading to a new building that will then not occur in the Harris, uh, in the Harris Fine Arts Center, if that makes sense.
I have a question about, um, parking utilization during performance times. Do you have data about like the Museum of Art Lot and the, um, law building lot and what, how they're filled during performance times? Have you tracked that already?
You know, that with the COVID, we weren't able to go out and collect any data. It, it's changed things dramatically and so, um, that would be something in the ongoing program within this next year. We'll be checking some of those lots and buildings and looking at the utilization of those lots. Uh, we ourselves, as BYU, I'm speaking for BYU and I apologize, I don't mean to speak for them, but as, as we look at what's occurring on campus, we need to know and understand as well, and so we need to understand that utilization. It doesn't do us any good to build a new music building and have the parking fell. So we've got to find out ways to make that work as well, and that, that's what we're all hoping for and striving for with this TDM program is to look at ways to utilize the underutilized stalls at different times of the day. So the parking utilization is one of the greatest things that we can use in a crossover environment so we can see how those stalls load and unload. That is something that we'll certainly continue to look at.
Okay, I have, um, two more things. One of them is a, a positive comment. Um, I live in the neighborhood east of campus and I know that BYU puts out signage at the beginning of every semester and women's conference and other kinds of things, asking people not to park in the neighborhood. And during the day, that has been effective. I'm not entirely sure that it is at night and that I think there would probably also be spill over into the school. Um, but I have to say that BYU has done a good job of moving the daytime parking out of the neighborhood. Um, I will note that, um, driving from the Creamery to the Museum of Art parking lot takes almost ten minutes. Um, so if somebody were doing a drop-off and then going to the Museum of Art, that there is some time involved there just in the car. It's closer to walk, but, um, it's, it's hard to get there basically because campus has changed the way the roads are. Um, and I understand why that's the case. I'm not necessarily complaining, I'm just pointing out a reality.
I think that's a good observation and I, and, and to answer the previous question, um, we, we don't have the data because we haven't been looking at it, you know, except for since the COVID thing, but I can tell you anecdotally that prior to that, I think the Museum of Art parking is underutilized in the evening. Um, and there's a, a lot of potential parking there. Um, there is a connection between that lot and the other one. Um, and we've had talks and considered whether that should be opened for events or not. Um, I don't know if you're aware that a fatality occurred, uh, about ten years ago along that road, which was part of the reason why that was shut down.
I am, and so I.
Yeah, so it's a thoroughfare for students, between students and the campus. And so we're, we're trying to be as thoughtful as we can about that and, and look at all the options, but, um, but yeah, there is, the, I think that you, you indicated by your question that the Museum of Art parking is underutilized and there, there's more we could do to, to advertise that and to persuade people to use that as their first choice.
Um, and going along with what Ms. Urkiaga said is, uh, people do not know that that parking lot is there or understand how to get to it. And speaking as a former student of BYU, the campus is so totally changed since I went there and probably many people who attend these performances who were once students went there. Uh, they don't know how to get around campus anymore because it, because it has changed. So I was wondering if perhaps once the Music Center nears completion, uh, what the thoughts were, might be of the campus of putting up permanent signs leading people to event parking.
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea and, and you know, there's no reason why we couldn't do that. Um, and, uh, at least to a greater extent than what we've done so far. I think that, that exists, but it sounds like it needs to be more prominent and, and, and more helpful.
I appreciate, um, the question or the issue being raised about the lack of connectivity between different parking areas on campus and uses on campus like that, you know, the, um, space between the Creamery and the Art Museum. That came up in the last meeting where this was discussed, I can't remember which of my colleagues raised that. Um, the idea that perhaps making that connection would, would help, uh, disperse the parking in an appropriate direction versus the neighborhood. I might really anticipated that that would be focused on tonight, maybe as, as part of the solution for the concerns that we're raising. I'm kind of surprised that we're not talking about things like that. Um, with descriptions as to changes that would be made to help mitigate the concerns that I think we've consistently raised. I'm really surprised and I, I may have misunderstood this a couple of times. I'm really surprised that the university doesn't today have years and years, if not decades, of data on parking utilization across campus so that right now very clear decisions could be made, you know, relative to, um, if you do this, then you should expect that to happen and that sort of thing from a parking perspective. Um, but honestly, I'm not hearing anything tonight in terms of how the university would approach, just a fundamental concern of how is this going to work either day in and day out or week in and week out so that activities on campus aren't, um, creating an issue for neighbors. Uh, this feels like the same discussion that we had before, um, with a different approach, more detailed presentation and things like that, but I'm not hearing anything that, that, uh, I would call a, a solution or an effort to mitigate the concerns that we've talked about.
I love, I love the plan that BYU is thinking long-term on, but I just don't feel comfortable getting rid of five hundred prime parking spots that I know are always used. And if during the construction of this building, because the HVAC is still going to have, still going to have events going on there. So even before we open up this new music building, there's still going to be five hundred missing spots while this building's being built. And to me, that's, that's the immediate need, even without a long-term, you know, there may be a long-term Band-Aid, but I don't see a Band-Aid for that construction period when those spots will still be needed in the evening hours by people who don't know their way around campus. That's my.
Yeah, and, and if I can speak to that, I, I think that a lot of the concerns that are being raised have to do with sort of individual and anecdotal experiences on campus. Um, but I think that what our study shows us is that there is adequate, the, the campus is adequately parked. We don't have a problem and, and I, and I can understand that everyone's had an experience of coming at a time when there weren't people finding parking and, and they wanted to. But, um, there are, there are parking places available and, and, um, particularly during the day, I think the, the study, uh, that the transportation, uh, plan that's, that's been presented, um, demonstrates pretty, pretty clearly that the parking is available and that a number of solutions have been created to, uh, to make it more usable. It also demonstrates that, um, the amount of overall parking at the university is increasing over the years, even though this construction will take some of those away. Um, it's, it's still an increasing, uh, vector and, um, there are, there are two different kinds of issues here. And, and maybe this last thing I'll say is that the way that the ordinance is designed is, is to, uh, create parking requirements for certain kinds of use. And because colleges and universities have multiple uses, that they generally, in most ordinances, will have their own category for colleges and universities. Um, Provo ordinance is unique in, in that it doesn't have that. And that's something that we've been talking with staff about and that we hope to be able to force them to create. But it creates a dilemma for colleges and universities because there are so many things going on on campus, right? There, there are all kinds of events, all kinds of uses. And if you have to design a parking program to respond to every particular use that happens on a campus, you're, you're kind of in a dilemma. And this, this project is maybe a prime example of that where, you know, you could, you could locate, uh, a performance venue interior in the campus and maybe not present the same, the same amount of, uh, burden to the adjoining neighborhood. But then you have people having to drive through campus to get to the venue. Um, and, or you could put it on the outside of the campus where it's easier to access. But there's the concern that it spills over into the neighborhood. Um, you can't have it both places and you have to decide what works best for your, your, uh, needs and then you have to mitigate the potential downsides as best you can. I think that, um, what we've done here is, uh, I think it addresses the needs that, that have been seen. I, 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 I'd love to have more specific questions that we could respond to. Um, but I, I think that we've done what we can do to, to mitigate the needs that we have.
The, the problem I have is that the parking that's being provided is on the opposite side of campus. So the venues that are needing to be parked, like the Fine Arts Center and the proposed music building are on one side and the bulk of the parking is on the other side. So yes, you're providing parking, but it just doesn't feel like it's, it's going to be used because it's, it's not an obvious spot to park.
Right, and, and people have not gotten used to accessing the Museum of Art parking lot from the west instead of the east. Um, and, and so that needs to, that's an education that needs to happen. That's what you should be best out of the university's education. But I think, but what I think that we've, what, uh, But I think but what I think that we've what Ryan has demonstrated is that within five minutes of the music building, there are 2,328 stalls. You know, the the largest venue in the music building has, I think, 500 seats. Thousand seats, I'm sorry, thousand seats. And the traffic study shows that you need about one car for every four seats. And so so the parking is there. And helping people find it is 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 naturally important. But but there's nothing that it's not a question of relocating relocating building or building new parking. It's a it's a question of making sure that people understand how to get to the parking that's been provided.
What I'm hearing is you're saying that the university is going to try to educate visitors, and you're replacing the parking stalls that are being lost with parking stalls elsewhere. Those are the only two things that I'm hearing you say that you are doing to address the concerns that we've raised. Everything else is basically just trust us. There's adequate parking on campus for our needs. Am I missing something with what?
I don't think it's I think it's trust the data that that Brian's put together here for us. And you know, the it's one thing that needs to be pointed out too is that one thing that Ryan said, that the number of performances is not changing. And the demand is not changing. The the location is changing by, you know, a two or 300 yards to the east. But the the parking that's there and it's been utilized and hasn't been spilling into the neighborhood is still going to be there other than these stalls, right, temporarily.
Yeah, it's it's a significant number of stalls. And I mean, even just the the numbers that you're zeroing in on. The idea that there are 2,000 spaces in proximity with this new use and that that therefore is adequate. You know, there is room for potentially tens of thousands of students to be on campus and faculty and different things like that at much of those same times. So I I'm struggling to know exactly where this is going. I staff's recommendation, I don't totally understand with the idea that planning commission is comfortable and that's some kind of a condition. But frankly, I think there's a way to work this out. I'm just frustrated that the university isn't being more proactive. Frankly, that they haven't been more forward looking in the past if if they don't already have very detailed plans in place to to deal with what we're talking about tonight and those sorts of things. Again, I really believe there's a way to make it work. But I I'm not feeling like much is being offered to try to make that happen.
I'm gonna I'm gonna jump in here now. I wanted to let all the commissioners kind of air their concerns. I have a few comments and then a couple of questions for the applicants. Number one, I totally agree with Hale Engineering's report that another transit stop on 900 East would be very useful. There's a quite a large gap along 9th East. It's a heavily pedestrian and biked corridor. There's a lot of activity along that corridor. And the only transit is all the way over on University Avenue or around on the other side of facilities. So it's it's a hike if you're caught in the middle there. So it's not conceivable that someone coming to an event, performing arts event in the middle in the evening is going to want to take transit when there's that far to go for a stop. That's my first point. The second is if you are already having to put signage in the neighborhoods to the east, then there is a parking problem. If you didn't have to do that, then obviously there would be adequate parking along 9th East for all the activities going on there. And that's been an ongoing issue for many years. So you may have adequate parking on campus, but it's not adequately located or it's not properly located. And it's understood that over time, your campus is densifying. Many campuses are now. Many campuses are trying to create what you're doing, a pedestrian oriented center and heart with parking on the perimeter. But as you densify and take away surface lots, you need to start thinking and planning to build structured parking. And I know it's expensive. Maybe you have to charge a nominal fee for it. But it's inevitable, and I'm I'm actually dismayed that a building of this sort would be proposed on a surface parking lot and that that wouldn't be structured parking would not be in the plan for some close proximal location to that. My questions are two. And we may need to pull up a campus map of some sort to answer these. But besides the 227 spaces you're putting back in front of the music building after construction is complete, you mentioned there are another 130 stalls being built. I'd like to know where those will will be. And I would also like to know where you're going to direct people who frequent the Wilkinson Center and the new music building to park. And I agree with some of my colleagues tonight that I've attended evening events at the Wilkinson Ballroom, and that parking lot is very full in the evening, as late as 9:30. So it's full now. If you take away a lot of the parking in that area along 9th East, I don't know where those people are going to go, except the neighborhood, because they're not going to know where to go. So if you could just show me where those 130 stalls are going to be built and where you're directing people attending events at the music building or Wilkinson to park, that would help me understand what the plan is here.
I to be I don't know that it's part of this week's presentation or this meeting's presentation, but in the previous presentation, there was a map presented that showed where the new parking areas will be. And they are immediately to the south of the new proposed music building and to the east of the Harris Fine Arts Center.
That is correct. So south of the music building, right across the street in Campus Lane, is the ROTC Building, has a different name, but we all call it the ROTC Building. And south of that is the is the Grounds Department. This is Ray Bernier speaking, Campus Architecture. And we have approvals in place to be able to proceed with a project of cleaning up some of the grounds area there by moving a few items out of the way and adding additional parking into that area just to the south of the ROTC. That's one of the locations.
Well, I I'm just going to interrupt you quickly because I will tell you, I'm not a BYU grad. I did not grow up in Provo. I've been here seven years. So I'm not familiar with all the buildings on campus as most of you are. So that's why I say I would appreciate a map. I can't make a decision if I don't know where these things are.
Understandable.
Pull your map now. Aaron is trying to get one up.
Thank you.
So if you zoom in the campus.
You have to use the cursor or she won't be able to see your point.
Throw me a cursor, okay, thank you.
I still have the slide show up.
All right, you guys share the screen.
Can that be seen?
See now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so here's Campus Lane, 900 East. This is the location where the music building is being proposed to go. This is the ROTC Building. They're currently parking in here. We added stalls here not too long ago. There was an old house here we tore down, added stalls. If I can, can I move the screen? If I grab it and move it, there we go. So this area of campus right here is the Grounds Department. They have other areas in campus as well, but this is the major location. So we have approval to tear down this house and tear down a house that is here. The people that are in this were in this building. That was the Grounds Department offices. They have already been moved into a space that's been designed and built in this building in this proximal location. So that is also going to come down. And our goal is to have both of these torn down, have this moved before the end of summer and have it located in one of these locations. I don't know the design well enough, I'm not close enough to that. But to be able to add stalls into this location, expanding this, and this will be directly across the road, Campus Lane, in the new music building. Now to move up here for the second location, we're currently in a design process related to this area. We don't have approvals for it yet, so I can't speak about it too specifically. But in this process, we're looking at this area right here and doing things related to parking. Sorry, I went a little too far south. But in this area, coming up into here with the closure of the road, there's a slice in the land right here that goes down into the Harris Fine Arts Center that is currently for truck traffic that comes into this location, some of which is, of course, for the music building. And those trucks will no longer need to come here. So this land right in this area is an ideal location for us to expand parking. And so our thinking is that we can expand parking. We're still in the design process. So we're saying approximately between the two of these. We're trying to expand this even more in terms of what the current design showed. And the architects, HKS, working with us, have tried to push even more parking into this zone, understanding the importance of trying to get more parking into the heart of campus without getting too far in, because we don't want to get rid of the pedestrian nature of campus. So it is a balancing act. But does that answer your question? Those two locations are what we're currently working on.
Ray, could I add add one thing? This is my fellow with HKS Architects. In the area that Ray was just talking about, the other thing that we're trying to do, quite frankly, is enhance the connection of the MOA parking to the parking that is immediately east of the Harris Fine Arts Center. So now the the notion of connecting those through, yes, right through there, enhancing that connection, going southeast and then into the campus. So the three major lots that are surrounding this this the new music building are are being enhanced in one way or the other.
And one thing, this is Travis Dance from BYU Campus Planning. And one thing we've learned recently is that that 130 number may now actually be lower than our latest designs are showing. We may actually be replacing closer to 160 stalls instead of just 130. So when you look at the stalls that are going to be permanently displaced, we're going to be replacing almost half to 75% of those stalls when things are finalized.
And what's the timeframe on replacing or reworking the parking off of Heritage Drive and making that connection? We talking five years, 10 years, next year?
The anticipation is less than five years. Again, we're currently in a design process, working on it. We hope to have the construction documents done by the by probably February or so of 2021. But again, there's other things that have to align in terms of getting other things constructed, etc., before we move into this project if it gets approved. And our anticipation is that it will be approved, but we're we're just not there yet.
Thank you. I I'll just say that it's very helpful. The presumption in Provo is that everybody knows this campus like the back of their hand, even though I'm hearing from my fellow commissioners that it's changed so much that they don't any longer. To it would have saved a lot of time. I'm just going to say this as a helpful hint to you in the future. It would have saved a lot of time if you'd had a simple diagram with this aerial that showed the new building, showed how many parking spaces were getting built back, showed the expanded parking to the south, and showed what your your future plan is for the parking off of Heritage Drive. Would have answered a lot of questions, I think.
That was actually in the last time we were in the planning commission, a month and a half or so ago, there was actually a map that had that information on it. But that's all right.
It wasn't discussed if it was, because I was at that hearing.
I was there too. We didn't get an opportunity to discuss any of this.
I have a comment. I'm looking at the map included in the staff report. And the parking at the Law Center, Law School is a good portion of it is graduate student parking, and the rest seems to be faculty and staff parking. The only other the majority of the other graduate student parking seems to be on the west side of the school. There's a tiny little bit just north of Law School, but the the other portion of the graduate school are graduate student parking. There's a little bit on the west side, but the majority seems to be right there by the Law School. Where do you intend to move the graduate school parking?
This is Nathan Summers. I'm the Chair of the Traffic Community at BYU. Our goal is to keep the total number of graduate stalls the same during construction of the project. Most of this area will be turned to graduate parking as well as some of the areas further south in these lots. But the total number of graduate stalls available will be the same.
The graduate school parking on the west side of campus is is there largely because of the Marius School, the business schools. I don't know if graduate students can park in this parking structure. There is a parking structure.
I'm having a hard time hearing the person who is just speaking.
Oh, that was me. I was just saying that the the reason that the there's parking for graduate students on the west side is because that's where the Marius School is, the business school of the university. So the the graduate students in that program park there. And there is a there's a parking structure on that side as well.
Okay.
Also saying that the 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 new Life Sciences Building includes parking structure within the building.
All right, so the but the majority of that graduate student parking is going to be moved further south?
Some to the west, some to the south. I'm sorry, to the east, some to the east over by the Comprehensive Clinic, which is just to the east of the Law Building and and where the music building is planned to be.
Okay.
Total stall count will stay the same on that east side of campus.
All right.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant commissioners? If not, I'd like to open it up for public comments, see if we have any public comments on this item. All right, I'll ask our administrator to open up this portion of the hearing to public comments. Any neighborhood chairs or members of the community who would like to weigh in on item three?
Okay, do we have David Atchison from the Wasatch Neighborhood Chair? Yes, I'm right here. Okay. Go ahead. Hi, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm David Atchison. I'm the Neighborhood Chair of the Wasatch Neighborhood. This is really the key neighborhood that we're talking about. We are east of 9th East, just east of 9th East, and we take in Wasatch Elementary School and streets like Briar and Birch and Ash. So and Apple and Cherry, Locust. I live on Maple Lane, for example. There's Cedar also that comes into play. All of these streets, very dramatically affected from time to time by BYU and its multiuses. I'll start by saying that the earlier comment about the signage of please don't park in this neighborhood, it's a neighborhood and not here for BYU events for Women's Conference or Education Week have been great, and we are so grateful to BYU for doing that. The issue, though, and I am I'm we love the music, the the thought, the vast majority of people, I can't think of anybody, I haven't talked to anybody in the neighborhood that doesn't say, wow, a new music building, that'll be great. So the issue is not the new music building. The issue is the parking spilling over into our neighborhood. That's the crux of what I'm representing this evening, and that is. And I think that the program that's the slides that have been presented here tonight about the parking program, although super thorough and thousands of dollars have gone into all of that kind of research and preparation, is meaningless to the evening parking issue. So that's a great plan for students. What we anticipate is that, and I have a daughter that works at the ticket office. What we anticipate is that, and I have a daughter that works at the ticket office in the HVAC. And she said that ticket, average ticket prices are $22 to go to an event, a music program event. But if it's Kristin Chenoweth or Itzhak Perlman, that those are $80 or $90 each. So the demographic of people that are filling the DeYoung and that will be filling the auditorium at the new music building is not students. It's people with disposable income. And that, with that comes age. And so it's not even a 30s demographic. It might be a 40s demographic, but you're talking about people like me in their 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s. These are folks, and I, I would disagree. And I know we've talked about anecdotally this evening in somewhat of a disparaging way or that it's not, it doesn't rise to the level of data and research. But I would say then that instead of anecdotal, we just talk about experiential. And the experience, I would say that the vast majority of us even on this call have had that we've all at evening events on the BYU campus had a difficult time finding parking. And that that will continue with the current plan or lack of planning. And so when you've got folks in their 50s and above, these are not folks that I would dispute the one to four ratio, four people consistently showing up in a car to go to an event that they've paid 30, 40, $50 for. You've got couples who are showing up in one car. And so that doubles the number of cars that need parking space. Certainly, I'm one of those who drops my wife off and then goes to find parking. And I live three blocks away. So you've got a demographic of folks who, because of advancing age, are like, I'm not walking three blocks even to get to an event, a 7:00 PM event on a December night. That's just not going to happen. And that's the experience that's, that's happening. So there, I am, I know this isn't part of the discussion, but a parking structure at BYU, it's perhaps the time has come. If in the footprint for these single stalls that are going to be to the south of the new music building, if those were converted into a parking structure that could take that kind of volume, that would be great. The, and I think it's disingenuous to think that. So nature abhors a vacuum, as we know. And I find it hard to believe that, that different departments or colleges within BYU would look at a venue like the auditorium at the new music building or the DeYoung Concert Hall and say, wow, well, is it available that night? And then have somebody say, oh, you know what? It's dark that night. It's book dark because there's an event in the DeYoung. Or, oh, no, you can't use the DeYoung because that night there's going to be an event in the new music building. I think that there is going to be tremendous demand that is created for these, this new venue. So I, and the other, there was a comment made about, you know, education. And, and I find that that's, that it's pertinent that really the only thing I've heard tonight is two things, and I agree with the previous, with the commissioner. But, and that is that the, the solution that BYU has, marvelous solutions in every respect except for parking. And what we're asked to accept is, oh, on the parking issue and spilling over into the neighborhood, east of Ninth East, accept the fact on faith that we're going to have, we're going to monitor this and, and figure it out. So I think we should figure it out now. And then we'll educate folks. And this is an uneducable demographic, 50, 60, 70-year-old folks that come to BYU, drop their spouse off, go find a parking place as close as they can. And, and it is really difficult to get out onto Ninth East, hang a left. If I cheat like I do in my neighborhood, I hang a left and go past the Creamery Outlet and then wind my way so that I can get down to the Campus Drive and turn into the museum parking lot. Or if I'm a rule follower, I go up to the BYU Laundry, hang a left at that light. Then I go down and I hang a left onto Campus Drive. And then I go through another light. And then I'm, so it's, it's a 10-minute, 15-minute process just for me to get to the BYU Museum and park there. So I don't think BYU Museum parking is, is really going to be utilized. And then I'll, I'll just end by saying, if you think about on a Friday night, a reception, a wedding reception in the WILK and a performance at the Auditorium at the new music building, the DeYoung and the performance there, and maybe the Nelkey and the Madsen. And you take all of these into account along with people going to, because we haven't had any discussion about the Museum of Art. So Museum of Art patrons need a place to park also. And you take all of those things into account on a Friday or Saturday night and that traffic must go somewhere. The other, the other thing is that this is not an audience or a demographic that you're going, and I'm speaking, I don't, anyway, that you're going to be able to educate to say, go park over by the football stadium and we will have a shuttle for you. That's, it's just not that. So it's, this isn't students. It's not even, it's, it's just not the demographic that is going to do anything but drive a car and look for a place to park as absolutely close as they can. The other thing is five minutes of walkability. Is that, what is that really? Five minutes of walkability as a 21-year-old? Or five minutes of walkability as a 60-year-old or a 70-year-old? So I don't, and add in the rain, the fact that you're in a suit, right? You've got your leather shoes on. You're, you're trying to be dressed up for a great evening. I just don't think that five minutes is, is, is realistic. Crossing Ninth East is another problem if you take out Wasatch too. So there's, there are just some unanswered questions that they weigh heavily on our neighborhood. So thanks, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Atchison.
Okay, we also have some written comments. The first one is from R. Paul Evans of Provo. He says, this is the first major TDM approved by the Provo City Planning Commission since adoption of the ordinance last year. Number one, what percentage of the 19,015 total parking stalls require the crossing of a public street in order to access the BYU campus core? The Harold B. Lee Library Building seems to be a center point for the campus core. Number two, when patrons visit the proposed music building for concurrent performances in the 1,000-seat concert hall and the 250-seat recital hall, where does BYU anticipate that vehicles will park? Number three, what percentage of the anticipated parking for events will require patrons to cross a public street? Number four, required parking spaces are specified in Provo City Code 14.37, Off-Street Parking Standards. Reductions in the Off-Street Parking Standards are allowed under the provisions of Provo City Code 14.37.070. The calculation of required parking spaces for mixed uses in a building is specified in Provo City Code 14.37.080 parentheses three. What is the calculated total parking spaces that are required for the proposed BYU music building? Number five, a TDM that incorporates parking spaces that will require patrons to cross public streets should specify where the patrons will cross public streets and should specify the safety of the crossing for pedestrians, vehicles, and bicycles. Number six, the establishment of a UVX station on 900 East in the vicinity of the proposed BYU music building is needed for the building and for campus access in general. How would Provo City Planning Staff and BYU characterize the status of a UVX station on 900 East? Number seven, what would Provo City Planning Staff and BYU suggest that citizens do to help further the establishment of a UVX station on 900 East? And then, and then we've got some more comments. So R. Paul Evans of Provo also asks, heritage halls constructed on 900 East are advertised as no available stalls for student vehicles. As a comparison to the possible education process for the music building parking behavior change, how would you characterize the ability to educate students living in heritage halls to not bring their vehicles to campus? And then we've got some more comments. Okay, this is from Pam Jones of Provo. She says, please don't cause more parking problems in the tree streets neighborhood. And then our last one that we have so far, Lucinda Kemp of Provo says, because parking is an issue, why not include construction of parking structures underground and above ground as part of this project? Okay, and let's give it a few seconds just in case we have some more people typing in comments. Okay, it looks like we have no call-ins. Let's just give it about five more seconds to see for written responses.
Thank you, Ms. Breen.
Okay, I'm not getting any more public responses.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll close item three to public comment at this time. And I'll ask the applicant if they would like to respond to any of the comments they heard from the public.
Um, maybe I can start by addressing the comments about the UVX station. BYU is open to that possibility. That's something that has been controversial in the neighborhood. And we don't want to override the wishes of neighbors on that issue. But if it's something that, that UVX or the UTA wants and, and that the city wants and that they can persuade the neighbors to want, then we are open to that possibility. That's not something that we've ever been opposed to. Let's see, other questions?
You know, a lot of great questions were, were asked. And I'll try and respond to a couple of them and then let others jump in as need be. Certainly, great questions by everybody. And certainly things that we're trying to think about and look out within this TDM program. Again, we're trying to make it as safe as possible. We recognize that individuals will need to cross streets. Down by the BYU Stadium, Lavelle Edwards Stadium, there's a crosswalk, a signalized crosswalk down there, push-button crosswalk that you can cross with and traffic signals. And so we're, we're trying to get people to cross wherever there's crosswalks, at least on those major streets, and trying to keep it as safe as possible. Within the continuing TDM plan, we'll continue to monitor and evaluate what's happening. Again, with the COVID that just came up, we're all scrambling to try and make our way through that and figure out what that new norm is. We don't know at this point what that new norm is, but we want to find out what it is. Because that's important. That's imperative to these projects on campus. We need to understand what the parking is going to look like post-COVID. We don't know if more classes will be online, if more people will be attending remotely. Just not sure what that looks like yet. Certainly, there, there's more opportunity now. I think people have become aware that remote learning and education is possible. I'm not saying that's the direction. I'm just saying that there are some unknowns. And we're trying to quantify those as quick as we can. What I can tell you again, and we'll just reiterate the point that we will continue to update that TDM program as requested by Provo City. We'd look at it on a yearly basis. We want to make sure that this works as well as the neighbors. Certainly, some, some great questions are asked with Harold B. Lee Library being the, the center of campus, the center of walkability. We wanted to make sure that we're looking at that. Certainly, if we, if we add more parking closer into campus, we might also encourage more people to drive. The whole TDM program is set up to try and create remote access into campus. And so we're trying to balance both needs and yet find a happy medium within that, that spectrum. So we know we're on the scale. We're just trying to find where that, where that happy medium is. And we will continue to search for that.
This is Lance with HKS Architects again. And listening to the comments being made, I have five points that I'd like to quickly just point out. And I love what Nathan had indicated for BYU that they have committed that no graduate parking spaces will be lost either after construction or during construction. And that those graduate spaces are planned to be accommodated as close as possible to where they're currently located. The other thing is that I really love Ryan's data that demonstrates that the campus is currently adequately parked. And if not adequately parked, it's probably, you know, above average. They have an above-average parking situation. The other thing I mentioned earlier was evening events will occur when the campus is offloaded from daytime uses. And that we are talking about the same events currently occurring in the Harris Fine Arts Program. We are not adding program by this building. We're moving program. And another point I heard about parking underground of this current music building, that is not possible because of the acoustical nature of these spaces. The most sensitive acoustical spaces in the building have to be built on grade. And that's what we've done. So to put parking underneath that would totally derail that, that strategy. So thank you for your time and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Lance. Any other responses to comments that you heard from the applicants?
I know this is something that BYU has not looked at yet. But one of the ideas that was brought up from the community is to do a parking structure south of the ROTC building. And that would make sense to me as, you know, something similar to what they have near the business school. I would hope that BYU would think about that.
I concur.
Commissioners, I'm going to turn it back over to you. It looks like there were no other comments from the applicant. So for further discussion, comments, questions of staff?
This is Andrew Howard.
Mr. Howard.
I am compelled by my colleagues' discussion and learning a lot. And I am, the parking garage discussion, I've always wondered that myself. And I note that UBU has put one in recently for this very same kind of problems. One of the things that I think would help this project, I think we can all say that we want the building. The building is something favorable. Mr. Anderson brought up at last meeting a dynamic plan. And I think what he was getting at during the, during the course of construction, among other things, how are you going to circulate that traffic and, and keep it moving during construction? And then today, I've heard that there are other projects going on campus that will dovetail in, in a series of moves and interface with this project. So there's a long-term plan that we cannot see. And so I think it would be good to outline how this fits in with the bigger plan. Because if you're going to mitigate the problem at some future date, that needs to be part of the presentation. I also think that you need to, to maybe break it up into daytime routine and evening routine as far as your long-term plan. And we've talked about the parking structure. So my comment, my final comment on this is I see a fantastic graduate-level project between the Engineering Department and the MBA Department and perhaps the Architectural Department. This is exactly why you have students go to school to solve these kinds of problems. And I think it would be very insightful. And I can, I can gosh darn guarantee you, they'll come up with a presentation that'll blow your socks off. And I think there might be a solution wrapped up into that. But I think everyone here really wants to support the project. I think Mr. Anderson said the answer's in there somewhere, but, but we don't know what it is. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners?
I, I, I just want to say that I like what Mr. Howard just said. Something that was said earlier by somebody from BYU was saying that, you know, HVAC is older, you know, kind of showing its age at some point, need to be replaced. I don't know if any discussion has been going on at BYU about that, if it'll be replaced, you know, with the same type of building, a performing arts building. But, you know, a parking structure would, would certainly, if you, one was built now, you wouldn't have any discussion later about would there be adequate parking for performances? And there wouldn't be any discussion as to whether or not you could hold more than one performance at a time. So, I, I like the idea that has been talked about, having a parking structure. I understand and I agree with not necessarily encouraging people to drive more, but I'm not convinced that there's adequate parking for, for this plan.
Thank you, Ms. Wynden. Any other comments, commissioners? Is anyone prepared to make a motion on item three? Mr. Phillips?
No, my idea is the same. I, I think they, you know, the study and data that's been proposed to us is, is very good, but it, it doesn't, it hasn't shown us how we're going to service this new music building in a way that the patrons are going to be able to, to reach it without, with a lot, without a lot of work, especially older people.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Maybe I'll throw some questions out, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
In terms of project plan approval, getting the project underway, getting something under construction, that type of a thing, maybe staff could just kind of talk us through the next steps in different ways, maybe that we could spend more time on this issue, and yet allow things to proceed with the project, if that'd be possible, might not be.
Understood. Staff, would you like to respond to that?
Um, I think the only way that's possible is to acknowledge that they would be able to build the building where they're proposing, as they're proposing, and they continue to explore other alternatives the planning commission might find acceptable. But based on the timeframes they've expressed to us, and when they're trying to get the building occupied, their hope was to get started on construction very soon. So I'm not sure how to continue to entertain the building at that location without then just saying, "Okay, well, we'll let that happen, and then let's talk about," or, or figure out some type of path forward to look at other parking options.
Has there been discussion about building the facility someplace else on campus? That's for staff?
No, no other location has been discussed with us for this, for this building, though.
Okay.
So essentially, if this is approved this evening, the parking issue is really between you, between, between the applicant and, and planning commission, or, sorry, planning department?
Well, only for a matter of time, because as BYU has expressed, they're constantly working on the next building, the next project on campus. And it's not going to be very long before they're back before the planning commission with that next request, the next building. I'm sure that they've heard very loudly and clearly the concerns that you're expressing. I'm sure they're also hearing that if they come forward to that next building and something more satisfactory isn't proper, that that may have a difficult time being approved.
Well, this is just maybe my thought, and I, I might have missed one discussion. I'm not sure that, recall the last time I was in a meeting where we talked about this project and some general, general concerns. But I really don't feel that the university has offered anything relative to potential even solutions as to how they will deal with the removal of parking in a particular area and the addition of a pretty intense use then in its place to that same spot, you know, just to state the obvious. Nothing by way of solutions. I don't argue at all with the numbers that Mr. Hale's provided. But, and I'll just speak for myself, my observation for close to 30 years of the campus and how it works and things like that is that there's a whole lot of parking that exists because there's a football stadium in the area. There's a lot of parking that exists because there's, you know, a big arena, the Marriott Center. But otherwise, there's really not any excess parking on campus, and the parking that exists around those two facilities is situated such that it goes unused almost all the time, it seems, or at least the vast majority of it does. So the idea that there's adequate parking for this particular part of the campus and the intended use and different things like that, given the lack of what's been added on the applicant's part in terms of proposals to deal with the concerns that we've talked about, I don't feel comfortable taking a step forward unless there's some future way to, to check the project before we get actual solutions, I think, to consider and, and to move on.
I feel the same way, Mr. Anderson. I'm sure there's an overall campus plan that shows, you know, 15, 20, 25, 30 years out, where buildings are planned and how they're going to move parking and all of those things. I haven't seen any evidence of that in what we've seen. And I really, you know, we grapple with parking with almost every project that we see, because it's an issue. Parking's expensive to develop, and we all understand that. But when we don't, when we approve projects that, that we feel are, are underparked or not adequately solving the, the problem of parking, you know, we hear the wrath of the community. There are several that have been built around the city that, you know, there's fallout for years from those. And it's, it'd be, it's incumbent upon us as commissioners to make the best decision for the community, not for a single petitioner. And I'm, I'm in total agreement with you, Mr. Anderson, on the location of the parking. There's plenty of parking. If you go over by the sports arena or the baseball field or the stadium, there's a ton of parking, it's usually empty. But parking along Ninth East is a dear commodity at the moment, and it will only become more dear as that corridor densifies.
Ms. Jenson, I think BYU would like to say something.
Please.
So this is Ray Bernier. I think there's a number of factors that we're trying to address. And, and of course, this is a very complex issue, and I think we understand that. That's why we've spent the last four and a half years trying to design this project. This has not been the typical process at BYU, where we'll get it designed in a year, year and a half, and get it built in two years, and we're done, move on. So this has been a long, ongoing process for a variety of reasons. Have there been other sites looked at on campus? Absolutely. An early, you know, part of this process, perhaps a year into it, we looked at a variety of locations, all kinds of problems associated with many things that are associated with this kind of a project. When you look at the issue of, of the parking, certainly, I think there's been a lot of good comments made here today. Parking structures certainly are, are an upside when it comes to adding more parking. But again, the idea of over-parking, certainly. You know, we could strive to do that, but as we showed in the TDM, we're above average in terms of what the ITE is recommending across the nation. If that's the direction we're trying to go, that could be done, but it doesn't seem to make sense in terms of where the world seems to want to go. I've talked with administration about the idea that if, if a UVX site came near this site, would BYU be willing to participate? In other words, we participated with land and other means in terms of the other locations. And the nod I've got of approval is sure, but it needs to come from the city. It needs to come from the neighborhood. And if the neighbors and the city would like to put a UVX near here, I think we would get on board. I don't think that's a hard sell to BYU.
Can I interrupt you just on that point? Perhaps the best next step on that would be for the Transportation Mobility Commission to take that under advisement and try to bring forward some type of recommendation so that it is coming from the city. Whether the TMAC creates some kind of committee working with the neighborhood, or I don't know what that process would be, but perhaps that's the most sensible way to move that discussion along.
Makes sense to me. So are there other factors? Yes, we are proposing in the TDM that this become a yearly analysis and a yearly look at what is going on. Let's assume COVID virus is gone and we get back to classes in September. We're going to keep Hale's engineering. I would imagine we continue the process on a yearly basis of looking at this as we proposed here today, and that we learn from it and we share with the city. We work closely with you folks and talk through what is happening related to this issue. Certainly, there's other issues that we want to contemplate related to this. So when you look at issues such as, we tore down Wyemount 1 to add 378 more stalls to campus, we did that two years ago. So are we continuing to add to the, to the asphalt that's looking at the sky and creating heat-in-all effect? Absolutely, we are. Is that a good thing? We can all weigh in on that issue. On the other side of it, we also understand that proximity of parking is a key issue. So BYU, we bought into all kinds of programs. When I first got to BYU a dozen years ago, we didn't have a, we didn't have a rideshare program. We didn't have a shuttle system on campus. All of that was debated in campus planning, thoroughly looked at, thoroughly studied, and BYU agreed to the idea of going to a shuttle system to help be able to transport students from the various locations close to campus. When it came to the UVX, or BRT as it was called in the day, BYU committed major dollars to it, both in the design of the facilities that are close to campus, but also in terms of the long-term use of it. So with that commitment of money, BYU has been trying to show that in good faith, we're trying to help our students and help pedestrians in the area, because I don't think the students are the only ones using UVX. I would imagine many people across the, the area are using UVX for a good purpose, to get us out of our cars and quit adding CO2 to the air. All of these issues are things that we could point finger to and say, "Look, BYU is showing that we want to work with the city, we want to work with the neighbors, we want to work with people to be able to find what is the best solution, what are the right things to do." And there are differing opinions related to it, we understand that. But at the same token, how do we get through these issues? It's, it's a tough, tough concern. So we've heard loud and clear here today, and certainly tomorrow, I'll be talking to the people that I deal with in administration and saying, "Is there a chance of a parking structure, is there something we try to do there?" We have built three parking structures on campus, and we understand that. When we did the Life Science Building, all right, we had neighborhood meetings. Mayor Curtis actually attended one of them. We had a whole room full of people, and the South Joaquin area was very concerned, again, about people parking in their neighborhood. We understand that. And what do we do? I think, if I remember the number correctly, 256 stalls, I think approximately about that, were built into the Life Science Building. Do they get used just by life science? No, we actually have a member of staff that goes around and puts things on people's windows that say, "You shouldn't be parking here." I'm talking about staff of Life Science Building that does that. Parking isn't necessarily dedicated to one group that park in that area, it is for people to use. Bill and I, Bill Pepperoni and I have had conversations about the multifaceted use of parking. We fully buy into that concept, to try to make it so that at 4:00 in the afternoon, the parking lot by J-Dogs is empty by 4:00 in the afternoon. Then I imagine it refills as time goes into the evening. Now, these are all anecdotal, of course, and I understand that. But what I'm trying to get across is, we've committed to a yearly analysis of the TDM. Perhaps that yearly analysis is an opportunity to be able to look at this, and if you deem this project appropriate to go forward, we're not going to back away from doing the yearly analysis. We've got to work with you folks to find what is the right answer. And I, I see it as a very, very delicate balance between too much parking, not enough parking, and trying to find what is the right answer as our society continues to move in the green direction. We've got to figure that out.
Can I just add a couple of thoughts here? I think the part of the disconnect that's happening in this meeting that I see is that this building is primarily planned as an academic building, right? I mean, we could certainly locate it in the, in the football stadium parking lot and have plenty of parking for it, but the students wouldn't be able to get to it. It needs to be near the center of campus, students need to be accessed, as is doing every day, all day long. We wanted to have performance venues in it also, because that's for the educational program. And, but to have it in its location where it can serve the students and be central to campus, it, it can't necessarily, at the same time, include abundant parking around it. And, and I, I think that many of the comments from neighborhoods and mothers assume the primary use, or at least the primary concern comes up around using it as a performance thing. And that's really a secondary purpose for these buildings, right? And, and the, the patrons coming to performance events, they might be on the older end of the spectrum, they might not be able to. But, and, and we understand those, and we try to address those concerns as best we can. But the primary use is as an academic building. And the second point is that, the reason why we're proceeding under a TDM process, and I understand this is a new process, is to reduce those kinds of trips, reduce the sign trips where people have to drive or car somewhere to use those, right? The whole idea of the TDM process, as I understand it, created by, by the city council, was to reduce those kinds of trips, we have to drive up right next to the building and park there. And so our, our campus design plan is to reduce those kinds of trips. And that's not convenient if you're 70 years old and you're going to a concert, I understand that. But that's not, that's not the primary use of this building. It's, it's an excellent secondary use, and we want to facilitate it. But that's not what this building is built for, it's built for the education of students.
The other thing I want to point out, and I don't think it's been a point of focus that, that we have fully addressed well enough to make sure that it's really understood. So I've asked Aaron if he would bring up the site plan of the music building. And if you can zoom into that, that'd be very helpful. On the north side of the building, we've organized the parking to the north with the idea of drop-off zones. When you see the two white areas, if you can point to that area right there and the one directly north of it, those are the two main accesses coming into the performance side of the building. Everything to the other end of the building is frankly more backup house and more educational-based, but these are also educational facilities first, as Eric just pointed out. And there then, you know, other things, performances at night and everything is, is a, is a different issue altogether. So we've built, or we're looking at building just south of that south entry, a drop-off zone. It's hard to see on the plan because of the red line that is there, but we've looked at the idea that there is a drop-off zone right here. Now, could we think creatively and come up with ideas? I don't think we've ever had valet parking on campus to help those that are 80 years old to park their car. But you know what? Maybe we ought to talk about those kinds of ideas as part of a TDM process, looking in the forward, and looking to the future. On the north side of the building, we've got a drop-off zone right there by that entry, and we currently have a drop-off zone by the law school. This shows a new drop-off zone that would be continued over to the west. that would be continued over to the west side. So that little curve right there, all of that is intentionally designed with the idea of a drop-off zone. So we do get a lot of students that are coming, not just 80 and 70 and 60-year-olds. We have a lot of student population that come to campus, get dropped off in the morning, then drive away from campus because their spouse goes off to work or something of that nature. Many of you that have been BYU students may have experienced that kind of behavior. We've looked at that and understood that. When we tore down recently the Fletcher Building, we created a drop-off zone in the heart of campus, right there where the Fletcher Building was and right near the Wilkinson Center, with the intent, again, of trying to get it so we don't have to park a vehicle on campus, drive their spouse or their best friend to campus and drop them off. So we're open to ideas. We're open to finding solutions. And certainly, there could be solutions in this area. But I'm fully supportive of what Eric just said, and that is, if we had to put 1,000 stalls around this specifically dedicated to the Music Building alone, number one, we'd get rid of multipurposing, which I think is a poor idea. And what it would really then do is create seeds of parking all over, and we'd end up eating up much more of your city, which I'm sure you probably wouldn't want us to do. Anyways, I think I've probably tried to make that point strong enough.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mr. Anderson?
I sure wish I was ready to make a motion, by the way. I'm not, but I genuinely don't feel that the concerns that the neighborhood's raised or that we've talked about as a commission are being heard. Yeah, I feel like we're hearing the same things over and over again. Like I said earlier, it's much the same of what I believe we heard the last time this was discussed.
Right.
I don't think we're saying, I haven't heard a commissioner say, that we feel like there's not enough parking or that there needs to be more asphalt collectively added to campus. I think it's entirely a situational issue. A gentleman just started to talk about some things, valet parking, for example, that, in my view, might really be the solution, or at least part of it. But the fact that we've been discussing this for as long as we have,
Right.
and we've discussed it in multiple meetings, and we're just now starting to get into those types of things, I think if this project moves forward, this issue completely just gets kicked down the road and doesn't get resolved, and we really will have missed an opportunity.
Makes sense to me.
I agree. Well, it took, what, over an hour? I don't know how long we've been hearing this item, but it's taken a long time just to get to some discussion of parking management issues, things like valet parking.
Yep.
You know, there's so much more that could be offered in terms of parking management to make this situation work, or alternatives to surface parking lots. And we've touched on all of these things, but I'm not hearing any of them being offered as a solution. It just feels as though there's a lot to still weigh in on here. And other commissioners, please weigh in, how you feel about this? What your thoughts are?
I understand that this building is to be used for educational purposes. But anybody that drives down 900 East can look into the parking lot on any given weekday and, right now, and see every single parking spot in that parking lot is taken up. I think that there needs to be a better plan to replace that parking and not take away from the number of parking spaces that are there. I love the idea of the Music Building. I think it will be an asset to BYU, an asset to the community. I don't want to see that derailed, but I really think that we would be doing a disservice to both BYU and the community, especially the neighbors right around there, if we approved it without making sure that there is adequate parking, both for during the day and in the evening.
Thanks, Ms. Wynden.
I think as we've been explained and talked to us about the parking and the quantity of parking that BYU has, they have plenty of parking, but they have not demonstrated to us a plan that is, that is a way that we can utilize that parking. And so that those, those people participating, whether they're a student or a patron of the arts, that they can, you know, that they're going to be able to adequately get themselves to this new beautiful Music Building and use it. And I don't see how they've explained to us tonight how we're going to do that, other than that those parking spaces are available. And we all know where they are. I mean, they're a distance from this building.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Staff has just let me know that there are some additional public comments that are waiting on the line. So I am going to reopen the hearing to public comment at this time for those additional comments.
David Etchison, are you still on the line?
Yes, I know it's hard to believe, but yes.
Okay, she's, we're ready for your other comments on that.
Thank you. So I find it interesting that my comments were ignored in the applicant's response. There was a response about crosswalks. That was actually kind of a throwaway comment on my part, but focus on that, I shouldn't have even brought it up. And the fact that there is no addressing of how far of a walk is it for folks that are buying $30 to $90 tickets? So it is a secondary issue, right? The primary purpose of this building is for education. If BYU were willing to say, "Great, education hours, which nobody has to pay for anything, are business hours from 9 to 5, that's great, or all performances are going to be free, which means that you'll probably get a lot more students," then I think that that would be okay. But just because it's a secondary issue, the evening hours, doesn't mean that it's not an issue. It's not a major issue for the neighborhood. The other thing is, is that the UVX stop, yes, certainly BYU has been in favor of it or neutral on it. And you do need to know, Planning Commission, that that is a hot, hot topic for this neighborhood and other neighborhoods, that a part of what was promised with BRT was that there would not be, there was huge discussion, huge argument, lots of anchor, and that the decision was that there would not be a stop on 9 East. And so that is a can of worms that should not be reopened. That was decided, and it was promised on. But then the other point is, is that this is an uneducable demographic in the evenings. These are not, so UVX, public transport, has nothing to do with this, because the audience that's paying to come to these things has a car, or three, and they are going to be driving their car, even if they live a few blocks away. They're not going to walk, and they're not going to use public transportation. So it's a moot discussion point to talk about, it doesn't even apply to talk about public transportation and how people are going to use it and therefore reduce the number of cars showing up vying for parking spaces. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Etchison. Ms. Brain, did we have any other public comments?
I'm checking to see if, I'm checking to see if Paul Evans had another comment. I'm not seeing it. So maybe it was just David Etchison who needed to bring up his other comment about the UVX.
And he's the neighborhood chair of the Wasatch neighborhood, correct?
Correct.
Did you want to give it another minute or so?
Yeah, let's give it a few more seconds, just in case. Okay, I do have a comment from Micah Wheatley of Provo. He says, "All of the other universities have football stadiums, et cetera, which affect their parking percentage, and yet BYU is much higher than the average. BYU has made many contributions to the parking issue. It seems to me that the commission is bent on having BYU build a parking structure. I like the idea of valet, et cetera." And hang on. And I'm just waiting to see if there's any more coming in. I did have some that came in earlier when it was cut off. Let me see. Hang on a second. So Paul Evans did not have one, but Tessa Santiago from Provo says, "The study omits to take into account the effect of Marriott Center Events parking on the admin building, law school, and MOA parking lots. They're filled with basketball fans every Thursday and Saturday nights. No space is available for music events." And looks like that's all that I have right now.
Great, thank you, Ms. Brain.
Okay, thank you.
I'll close item three again to public comment then, and turn it back over to the commissioners. Further discussion, comments? How would you like to proceed on this item?
I have something. I just, I really, really like the Music Building, and I really love the thoroughness of what they presented. I don't want them to think that we're trying to ruin their project. I just, I echo the comments that other commissioners have made, that this data that's been presented is geared towards the principal use, which is great. But the problems that occur are for the secondary use. And so the only way I can see for us to give approval with confidence that there won't be a problem is to say, "There's a moratorium on all evening performances until adequate parking is provided." And I don't think that's what you're looking for. But it's the extra people that you bring in at night who are not going to use public transportation, who do not have access to the free ride and UVX passes that are going to cause the problem. And it's, I don't know how to solve it without BYU proposing opening up accesses or clearing out lots specifically for this use at a certain time, or any other items. And I don't know that the men that are here tonight to represent BYU even have the authority to say, "Yes, we can do that," if we were to make that a condition of approval. So I feel like we're kind of going to butt heads, and we can talk till midnight about the same thing over and over and over. We recognize that the campus is perhaps adequately parked during the day, but you take 500 spots away during construction, and it's no longer adequately parked for a portion of campus, and it's certainly not adequately parked for any performance venues that happened in that time period. So I don't know how to solve that without sending them back to the drawing board.
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Wynden.
Certainly, BYU would not be the first university to be in a position where they don't have convenient parking next to a venue. They may have adequate parking, but it's spread out over the university campus, which would create problems because people want to park conveniently close to the venue that they're going to attend. If there was a method, be it valet parking, parking lot attendance out there with walkie-talkies, directing traffic, but a method where they can manage that type of thing so that people are not getting frustrated, they're not parking in the neighborhoods, they're not parking places where they're not, they should not be parking. If there was some sort of method to help mitigate that, then would we not be able to approve this and reach some sort of compromise?
So I'm hearing you say that you feel the potential solution is a parking management solution, whether that's valet parking, not allowing any parking in the small lot that's left and the lots that are being built to the south for any use except for that building, depending on time of day or evening. And there are many approaches you could take to managing parking so that we don't have issues. If you indeed do believe you have adequate parking on campus, you need to demonstrate that to us, how you would manage parking this facility. And we haven't heard that tonight. But for me, a solution is not park over by the stadium. That's not a solution that's viable for a building of this scale. If this were a commercial development, we would never even entertain a reduction in parking like this, especially during construction. It's just not feasible. Any other commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Anderson?
Will you entertain a motion?
I would, indeed.
I don't think it's going to surprise anybody. And I'll welcome, certainly, the discussion on the motion. If anybody wants to add anything or has concerns, but in the spirit of just wanting to spend more time on this, and I appreciate what was said, I haven't heard a commissioner yet say that they think the use is a bad idea. So the contrary, I think, by and large, we're very supportive of the concept. But parking is certainly a big deal. So I move that we continue item number three to provide the applicant an opportunity to propose specific parking management solutions and that the item be placed back on the commission's agenda at the soonest date after which a proposal's been provided by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion to continue item three?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Jensen. All those in favor of continuing item three? Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urquaga?
Sorry, I am staying on this particular issue.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, Ms. Jensen. So that is unanimous with one abstention from a commissioner who recused herself from this particular item. So item three will be continued until such time that we have a reapplication with the Transportation Management Plan and/or alternate parking plan based upon based upon the discussion this evening.
Madam Chair, could we have a five-minute recess?
Certainly. We'll set the timer. Ms. Brain, could you set the timer for five minutes, please? I'm going to hold you to it. All right, we will adjourn for five minutes. It is 9:24 PM. Looks like not quite everyone's back, so.
Okay. That was refreshing, though.
Indeed. We still have almost two minutes, so we don't have everyone back yet.
Yeah, I wish I were on Maria's beach.
I know. It looks lovely with the breeze blowing.
Need a Mai Tai.
Hey, I'm from Florida, what do you expect?
That's a killer screensaver. Or background, I guess you would call it. I think we're waiting on Dave and Lisa. And maybe Development Services as well. Yeah. Thanks for your time, guys.
When will public meetings come back?
I'm sorry?
I'm wondering when we'll have public meetings again, like instead of using Zoom.
Okay, Dave's back. I think we still need Lisa and staff.
Staff is here.
Okay, great. Mr. Phillips, you're back?
Yes.
Super.
You can't see me, but I'm here too.
Okay, great, thank you, Lisa.
Brandon, as soon as I stop sharing, you go ahead and start sharing.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to resume?
Yes.
Great. All right, it is 9:30 PM, and we will now resume the Planning Commission hearing. Our next item on the agenda is item four. This is a legislative item. Provo City Council Office requests an ordinance amendment to establish the Critical Hillside Overlay Zone to provide development standards to help protect the sensitive hillside areas of Provo's east bench. This has citywide impact, and Mr. Larson will present item four.
Okay. Can you see my screen? Can you see the slide that says item four?
Yes.
Very good, okay. So you, a number of you have seen this already. Had a good town hall meeting and received a lot of public comment there, and also have engaged with a lot of public, some even at their homes. And so we've had some good dialogue and received a lot of good input from the public on this. There we go, okay. So the, just right off the bat, just wanna again state what the purpose of the hillside or this Critical Hillside Overlay Zone is. It's simply to protect the aesthetics and ecology of Provo's foothills and to establish prudent standards for those areas in the zone. And then I wanna really focus on the things that have happened since we met back on April 1st, and I guess identify a few things that this ordinance does not do. It doesn't preclude development. It's not an attempt to take anyone's home or prohibit any additions to existing homes. The map boundaries have been redrawn to reflect a couple of things I'm about to point out. That's that lots that have been, that were created prior, that have been created prior to the effective date of this ordinance provided the ordinances adopted. Those lots would be exempt from these requirements. Again, the map reflects that. Also parcels not lying in development plots would also, that have been developed would also be exempt from these requirements. So we've talked about what the Critical Hillside Overlay is. It's an overlay, it's additional requirements put on the underlying zone. Couple of things, so related to public comments. You know, we received a lot of comments originally. This, of course, this is the text amendment, but also has the associated map amendment as well. Received a lot of feedback about the map, and that's changed, and I'll get to that a little later. But I just wanna identify a few of the things in the text that have changed since we last spoke. One of the, I've already noted the exception for the, for platted lots and developed parcels. We've also added an exception to the ridgeline requirements for those areas that are nearly surrounded by platted lots and developed parcels. We added a design standard to prohibit buildings with cantilevers and cut and fills. We, again, a foothill ordinance is definitely, one of the important points is to reduce cut and fill, so we thought that was an important addition. We had a request to include rammed earth fences as an approved fence type. We think that rammed earth fences can fit into the CH zone if they're done correctly. We had a, kinda going back to some of the exceptions, we added, originally added three exceptions to the, to these requirements. They were related to the ability to build homes and, or to build additions and accessory units in the CH zone. We wanted, the reason for the exception was to make it clear that, you know, if somebody were to propose an addition or another type of outbuilding, they wouldn't be held to those CH zone requirements. Well, after a member of the public pointed out some holes in the language, and so it seemed that the people, the platted lots and developed parcels were actually better protected without that third, without that third exception. Also, staff felt that the exception would also open the door for additions and accessory buildings in the CH zone that had been built after the CH zone started. They would be exempt from those requirements, and it would kind of undermine trying to, undermine some of the design standards that we had put into the, that are proposing, that we are proposing to put into the, in the zone. Some of the comments we received from the Planning Commission, I'll note some of the, some that came about from some of the comments we received from the Planning Commission. Definition of ridgeline was revised, as it notes here, to explicitly state that benches are not ridgelines. We understand that being able to build a home on a beautiful location overlooking a valley is important to a lot of people, and so we've amended that definition. Ms. Jensen suggested captions, thought that was a great idea, and so we added captions to the photos. Photos are important in this ordinance because they help to communicate the requirements of the ordinance. We've updated requirements for access, placing a limit of, no more than, when you have more than 13 or more lots, you'd have to have two points of access. One of the council members pointed out some of the, kind of an unsightly occurrence that has happened in the foothills, and that's a developer coming in, kinda grading the land, and then leaving utility poles on mounds. So we've added a prohibition against that. And we've also beefed up the, we're not requiring clustering. Clustering is an important thing, we think, in a hillside ordinance because it leads to more open space, but we are more strongly encouraging clustering by adding, I think, a generous density bonus. So those are things that have been added. In your staff report, I think identified a more lengthy list of additions. The, there were quite a few, and we feel like the ordinance, after having gone through a couple of public meetings and having received quite a bit of public input outside those meetings, we feel like we're really coming along with a pretty sound ordinance. I'm not gonna get into what, kind of the elements of the ordinance. We've talked about that at the city, at the town hall meeting, and we've talked about that at the prior Planning Commission meeting. We'll, a number of people have brought up, wanted to know about ridge lines. This, I think the photo explains a ridge line. You've got two opposite slopes, and when they, and at the point or the apex where they meet, that's the ridge, and you can see the long spine of the ridge there in the photo. But I think it's pretty clear at this point that the city has not, has not adopted any ridge lines. You can see the definite definition of ridge lines. That's a, a ridge line is something designated by the city, and the city has not designated any ridge lines at this point. So there are, for anybody that's wondering where the ridge lines are, there are none designated yet. So at this point, I just, yes, open it up to you guys for questions, to the count, the commission for questions on the text, and we'll go from there.
There was a, this is Commissioner Howard. There was a note about cemetery plots being affected. Has that been addressed?
We've definitely are aware of that issue, and I think we are waiting for some direction on that issue.
Okay.
Might I add with, while we're talking about that, could I also point out, since, you know, cemetery, we've had, of course, for those who aren't aware, we've had a request from the East Lawn Cemetery to have their parcels excluded, not only the ones that are currently, currently being utilized for plots, but the parcels that are kind of in their cemetery master plan. I also had a couple of, I had a citizen point out today that there were a couple of subdivision lots in the Ranger Station. I may be getting this wrong. It's like a Ranger Station Platte or something, but there's two lots that need to be excluded, and so I'd recommend that we eliminate those. There's also a subdivision plat that's nearly recorded that's adjacent to the East Lawn Cemetery that is either in the office of the mayor for recording or maybe over at the county recorders in preparation for recording, and you may consider also eliminating that from the map.
So maybe excluding pending recordings? And it seems to me like, as long as it's dedicated for cemetery use, that ought to be, just remain that way, no?
I, I have no objection to its removal.
Okay.
So the question is, if they were to decide not to build a cemetery, and then it became residential development, what happens at that point?
That's a good question. I spoke with Count, with Chairman Handley today about this issue, and he was, it was, he was okay with eliminating the cemetery parcels as long as there was some kind of, as long as it was established that they were going to be used for cemeteries and not for residential development or other types of development. I'm not sure how we'd go about, you know, nailing that down, but I know that at least one member of the council was interested in that.
I have some questions.
I should have read in item five along with item four, which is the map that goes along with this ordinance. So I guess at this point, we'll do it after.
Okay, I have some questions.
Please.
I love the update you did, so thank you, Brandon. My question is, how does the current version of this document address the concerns from the public input meeting? Do you feel like all those concerns were covered in the changes you've made so far?
I don't think we can eliminate all the public concern, but I think we've done a very good job, an excellent job in trying.
The majority?
Yep, I would say so. We, I think we've, we've met with, had hour-long meetings with, one-on-one with people, we've gone to their homes. I answered a zillion calls, a zillion emails. And that's not, that's just me, our secretaries, Bill. We've definitely been trying to make ourselves accessible to the public.
So one thing we, one thing we heard a lot was that people felt like they were going to lose the ability to develop their undeveloped land. I feel like you've made some changes in what you've done and presented to us, but is that still a reality, or is that just a perception that they have? A misunderstanding?
No, there, well, there certainly are undeveloped parcels that will be affected by this. I mean, if we took all of those out, there would be no need for this ordinance. But the more, the bigger concerns have been people who have a platted subdivision lot that hasn't been built on yet, or they have a house in the original area, they were worried that this was gonna make it difficult for them to rebuild or add on to the house. We've addressed all of those issues.
Okay, so most of the people that we heard from in letters were those ones that already had something that was developable.
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question is, what improvements or tweaking do you think are still needed? Is this actually polished and ready to send to the council? Or do you perceive that there needs to be some more tweaking still, some more discussion?
To me, the biggest issue hanging out there, the question or objection that has been raised that certainly has some validity are people saying, "This talks a lot about ridge lines. Shouldn't you define those ridge lines? Shouldn't we actually map them as part of this ordinance and not do it in two steps? Shouldn't you get that done now?" And that's a, that's a good point.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So may I ask, Mr. Pepperoni, when you say, "Should we show the ridge lines, or what we could, what we consider ridge lines for the purpose of this ordinance," that would be a map amendment? Are you talking about revising the map, not particularly, not item, not item four, which is the ordinance?
Right, it would not be the ordinance. It would be a. It would be either part of this next item or an exhibit for the next item, something like that.
Right, okay.
Some type of map amendment.
Oh, I thought it was interesting that we received quite a few comments from the public, which we did expect because it's a pretty hot button issue. But five of those, I just made general notes, five of those were, had concerns and some of them I think have been addressed for sure and five were to support it. They were happy to see we were considering adopting this. I think there's, there's a few opposition voices out there, but it seems like there's a lot of support for it as well.
I just realized I had a few more questions.
Please.
On the exclusion of platted lots and developed parcels, I think at the last meeting you talked about there being a date restriction on those. Did you just decide anything that had already been platted was now what you were going to eliminate from it and that not a houses built before a certain date couldn't have?
We just thought, taking a more simple approach, just anything that was platted prior to, I think that's the most fair approach too, is just to say anything that was platted prior to this, the adoption of this ordinance. That's what we thought was the most fair and probably the most straightforward way to address the situation.
With the platted lots been taken out of the map.
Okay, so it's not even a question, they're not even included?
We received some direction from members of the council to eliminate them.
Okay. And then I have two more questions. If you could tell us what a rammed earth fence is, because that's something that was added as an approved fence type. And then when you added the utility poles on mounds of earth, which I'm very grateful for because those are hideous, what would be required in the current standards that are proposed? Like, how do you prevent that? What is the alternative to what happened? How do you keep that from happening in the future?
So rammed, rammed earth fences are interesting. I, when I looked into them, it seems like they're more popular in Australia, but they're, they're essentially like, kind of like a dried mud fence and they can get pretty decorative or you have multiple layers of different colors of mud and they can look, they can look pretty neat, but also I guess they could also end up looking bad over time. But I thought that some of the pictures I saw of rammed earth fences were pretty interesting and could definitely add some character to the foothills.
So do you intend to add those pictures to the document as well so that there's no confusion about which kind we want?
No, it was not my intent to add a picture for rammed earth fences.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Oh, but you asked about the mounds of earth. You know, frankly, I guess on, I, we put the requirement in there. First of all, I put an insofar as possible because it is possible that there may be requirements or allowances for utilities that I'm not aware of that may, on the state or federal level, that may trump this ordinance and so I put insofar as possible. So I'm not aware of requirements that would allow, would not allow us to require this, but I'm still thinking there could be a possibility. We, we put the requirement in there that they can't be on there. I haven't given it much more specificity than that, than that. I think I lean on the, you know, the city power department to kind of explain how, or Rocky Mountain Power or another power provider to explain how that, how that would work.
I think too, if we're not allowing them to cut in to the earth as much according to the ordinance, that maybe those things by default wouldn't happen because the cutting never took place in the first place. Or maybe I'm misunderstanding the ordinance, but it seems like they wouldn't be allowed to cut in as much as those areas where we've seen those happen.
There's definitely, cut and fills are definitely a concern and we've put in requirements to try to eliminate those and I think this addition of the earth and no earth and mounds, I think is going to be helpful in eliminating that unsightly occurrence.
Okay, thanks.
I would just like to say that I think staff and the committee have done an amazing job of pulling all of this together and I really appreciate all the effort that has gone into this.
Thank you.
I would second that. I think it's very well done. The graphics, the process of going back to the community and having a public hearing on it and getting direct input and meeting with the community as well. I think we have a great document. Do we have any other questions or comments for staff commissioners? All right, I will open it up to public comment. We did receive quite a few from community development or development services. They sent quite a few, I'd say about a dozen emails, letters and other communications they've received from the public and the commissioners all had those in advance and we've reviewed those. So if you're commenting this evening during the hearing, we don't need to rehear the exact same comment that you made previously. We're cognizant of those, but we are still encouraging you to weigh in if you have any new thoughts or comments.
Okay, we have a caller calling in. Caller 0061, go ahead.
Hello, sir.
Hello, this is Stephen Grow of Oak Lane in Provo. I'm calling just to comment briefly on ridgelines. In the recent two weeks, I've hiked and traveled this entire proposed zone area and I'm having a hard time seeing anything that looks like a ridgeline that would be included within the zone. It's just, since ridgeline prohibits development within 100 feet of it, interpretations could be different whether or not, I know we're saying that the noles or the bench is not a ridgeline, but I don't think there are any ridgelines within the proposed zone as it's been mapped. I would like to comment just briefly in regards to limits of disturbance or the LODs. The ordinance says that a person can only build or make physical changes on 40% of the lot. That's quite a restriction. I just need to confirm that if a person was developing a 10-acre parcel, would that 40% development limitation be after roads have been installed? If you install roads in a 10-acre project, you're going to probably take 10 to 15% of your project in roads. As I travel along Sherwood Hills, Oak Hills, Indian Hills and those areas, most of those beautiful homes use certainly more than 40% of their lot in their yards and in their grading and in their home. I don't see a problem in limiting the home to 40%, but, but to lose 60% of your property and not be able to disturb it in any way, I'm just concerned whether or not that other 60% could be put into grass, gardens, play areas, or what is the limit of disturbance? One item too was, I am familiar with the letter that came in from the East Lawn Cemetery. Hopefully, I mean, there are probably 10,000 recorded plaits up there or cemetery lots, about 5,000 of which are used. All of those recorded plaits, we're requesting that they be excluded. They're, they're already cemetery lots. And there's also a development area to the north where Laney Farms has been for about 10 years, but that's proposed also for cemetery lots. A last comment would be just, I hope that some remediation work can be as you hike this area, particularly in the Slate Canyon area, that the scarring of the mountain in that area over the past 100 years has never really received significant remediation. And if there's any federal funding or programs from the state, it would really be nice to clean up some of the old torn rock product and other gravel pit operation scars. And certainly something should be done in regard to the ongoing gravel pit between Springville and Provo, some coordination with Utah County. The scarring there continues and it's significant. But thank you very much. I certainly support keeping beautiful foothills. I just hope that we can allow other people the opportunity to build the type of homes and the beautiful homes that exist on our foothills today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grow. We'll have staff address your question about the lot LOD.
So yeah, limits of disturbance. He is correct that the limits of disturbance would only allow you to disturb 40% of your lots, so 60% of it is left in natural vegetation. I will note in the limits of disturbance definition, it's, the limits of disturbance is the area in which construction and development activity are contained, including development and construction of main buildings, accessory structures and recreation areas. They don't need to include 10 feet of paved or unpaved shoulder for driveways, areas consisting of natural ponds, streams and other vegetation where grading work is done. It doesn't, doesn't address streets because they're, the limits of disturbance are supposed to be on lots, but it is, it does allow for 10 feet of width of, or paved or unpaved shoulder for driveways.
Great, thank you. Ms. Breen, do we have any other or administrator, do we have any other comments from the public this evening?
Yes, we have one more.
Thank you.
Caller ending 299, go ahead.
Yes, I, this is Tucker Lee, resident of Provo, and I'm grateful for, for what you're trying to do with this ordinance. I also want to briefly give a shout out to the staff. Brandon Larson has done a fabulous job with this and, and Bill Pepperoni supporting what's going on. These are good efforts. I want to bring to your attention what I think is a clear deficiency in this ordinance. If the true purpose is to protect the hillside, to preserve the natural beauty, to protect the ethics, or I'm sorry, aesthetics and ecology of what's going on. As I've mentioned before, I'm involved in the ownership of over 100 acres of this, of this area in three different parcels. And those areas are the remnants of old gravel pits and, and these gravel pits on one 60-acre parcel, the disturbance is over 90% of the gravel scarring, or the gravel operation scarring is over 90% of the property. And so if I have to limit my, my, my level of disturbance, that will preclude reclamation beyond just the, just the bare necessities of providing adequate land for, for, you know, subdivision and for the development. This ordinance then would force me to not address any reclamation of any of these scarring of the hillsides, which, which Mr. Grow pointed out is the remnants of that torn gravel pit, which, which dates back many, many, many decades, long before I was born. And, and yet this, if this effort truly is to protect these hillsides, clearly we're talking about protecting these hillsides that have been undisturbed, but, but the bit silence and, and quite frankly, it just freezes in time, these, these existing scarred areas. And so while there's, while there's brief mention of, of the, of some of the man-made issues that have, that have happened to scar some of these areas, this is, this is, I, I, I don't know how to say it nicely, these are the, these are the worst, most unsightly things, the blight on our hillside and we have, we have the, we have no ability with this ordinance to, to protect those aesthetics or restore those aesthetics to what they, to what they once was. And so, so I, I think that the, that the effort is good, the initiative is good. I hope that we can do that, but this actually limits our ability to reclaim 30 acres in Provo Canyon. It limits our ability to reclaim the Slate Canyon area, the remnants of that old torn gravel pit and then another parcel that's seven acres that has been carved up by the gas company and Rocky Mountain Power over the years and, and again, leaves me with no ability to do what I think we're all, we're all trying to have happen. And so I hope that, I hope that that doesn't go unnoticed in this process and gives us a chance to, to address it. I think that there's a, that this is a real opportunity to do the right thing and I hope that, that when we look at this entire 800 acres that's being rezoned, we need to acknowledge that half of that acreage estimated, 400 of those or more than 400 of those acres are actually owned by Provo City themselves. And so Provo City has the ability to do whatever they want with it and, and of course, deal with the, whatever end use comes out of that. But of the remaining half of that acreage, we're, we're 100 out of the 400 acres and, and we have a, ours is, ours is blighted. Again, we didn't do the blighting or we didn't create the blight, but we did, we did want to reclaim it through development and this ordinance speaks loudly against us being able to do anything. The result might be that we just freeze that in time and don't have the opportunity to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Turley. We will have staff address your concerns at the end of the public comments.
Okay, we have another caller.
Thank you.
Caller ending 443, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kay Nelson. I live in Provo and I support this, this amendment, this critical hillside overlay zone amendment. I give kudos to those who have worked on it. They've put a lot of thought and effort into this as a way to guide development while preserving the green space in the foothills and that includes access to trails and to keep the view of the foothills and the mountains as natural as possible. So I'm grateful for those who've spent so much time the last six months, seven months working on this. I am concerned about the ridgeline definition and hopefully homes will not be built right on the edge of benches for several reasons. One being the possibility of erosion and sliding. If a house is subjected, subjected to quake or a wet season, there've been houses up in, in the Sherwood Hills area that have had problems sliding off. And so hopefully, you know, they won't be built right there. The other, the other concern is to the aesthetics of the view. We need to keep the beautiful view of our foothills and mountains and yes, you know, 40, 50 years ago, homes were built up in the foothills, up in the Sherwood Hills area and all along the bench, but this northeast area is the remaining area in Provo that's beautiful and natural with lots of trails, including the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. And I agree with Mr. Grow. I think the gravel pit scars that, that are along the foothills in Provo need to be some remediation done, especially the one on the north end of University Avenue. It's, it's an eyesore there. So thank you for hanging in there for so long tonight, commissioners. I appreciate it and I do support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Okay, we have some typed comments. The first one is from Alex Grow of Provo and he says, limits of disturbance at 40% feels eerily like a force taking of 60% of landowners' land. Examples would be a lot approved for a single-family home where a lawn or landscaping would be included in a disturbance, so someone on a half-acre lot would be limited to more or less 8,000 square foot yard. Say a landowner wanted to plant a vineyard or orchard, 60% of their land would be ineligible. Either the 40% needs to be raised to a higher percentage or the definition of a disturbance needs to be loosened to allow for acceptable activities beyond just its natural state. Please don't forcefully remove the usage of 60% of landowners' property. Then we have some more comments. We have Craig Carlisle of Provo. He says, as I travel north out of Provo, south out of Provo, or when looking east out of my office window at Slate Canyon, I wish there were ordinances that encourage the development, reclamation. development, reclamation of those disturbed areas. I have represented sand and gravel operations as an attorney and have made a number of presentations to planning commissions demonstrating how these sites can be developed as a valuable viewscape, given the right ordinances. The Utah Valley University property is one example of a reclaimed gravel pit. This ordinance fails to consider the existing problem areas and it looks like it effectively will freeze in place and time those existing areas. I think this ordinance and the attendant zone map amendment should be postponed and the ordinance amended to address this issue. Thank you. Then we have a few more. This is John Nixon of Provo. He says, I have a question about how properties were selected which are included in this classification. There is a thirty percent slope definition in the proposal, but not all properties that meet that criteria are included in this proposal. What made the difference between properties that are on the bench that are included and are not included? Even some properties with homes on the acreage already are being shown as included on the proposal, which seems as though should have been exempted as were other similar properties. Acreage size also does not seem to be the deciding factor. The question is, please help me understand the criteria used to include or exclude properties. And we've got a few more. This is Paul Perry of Provo. He says, I want to express that existing residents and vacant property owners who live on the east bench have no intention of damaging our properties or doing poor work. This ordinance is designed to prepare, primarily target residents who support Terra Development and Bob Jones. The ordinance limits and restricts what the current precedence has been for decades. It also includes some resident properties who voluntarily state that their land is not developable to make this appear non-targeted, which as a result has affected immediate properties around them to be selected. They've expressed this sentiment in support of blocking Terra Development under the belief that it would prevent Terra Development from proceeding. That belief was false and now proven to them since building permits have been issued to Terra Development. Residents have been deceived by those people passing around the petition. In addition, a neighborhood chair was fired in relation to this for expressing that false information was being spread around. To create such an ordinance removes the diversity and creativity of so many excellent future neighborhoods and improved engineering methods. Many of us appear to be targeted because we supported Bob Jones and didn't sign the deceptive petition that was passed around the neighborhoods. Terra Development is good for the city of Provo and the Utah tax base. The only thing that needs to be done is to enforce current ordinances rather than passing additional restrictive restraints and thereby reducing the growth of future east bench taxpayers that would normally pay for city infrastructure. By blocking branch, branch, bench area development, it places a greater burden of taxes by everyone living outside this area. I've met with neighbors going door to door over the last four weekends and found that people simply do not know the facts. They have been misled by a small group of residents who live immediately next to where Terra Development is going to build. All properties should be considered equal. No neighborhood group should have the ability to affect the future of another neighborhood's Fifth Amendment rights to private property. The founders of our nation established this amendment because- Time. Okay, and then we have another one. This is Terry Kemp of Provo. And Terry says, how can the inclusion of the area west of Iroquois Drive or even west of most parts of Foothill Drive be considered a critical hillside area when the area is already developed? This whole concept is much too detailed with many more pages than are needed and overly restricts existing homeowners from further improving their property. Isn't this a significant overreach of government control of private property rights? And that is what I have so far in the written comments, but let's give people a minute just in case any more calls or written comments come in. Okay, I'm not seeing any other phone calls and no other written comments, so that seems to be all the public comments for now for item four.
Great, thank you. All right, I will close the public comment period for item four and turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion, questions, motions.
Thought maybe uh they could answer some of the questions, the, the staff.
Thank you. Steph, could we press you to answer some of the questions that were uh raised by the public? And I have notes if, if you don't.
Yeah, I've taken, I've taken some. And I'll, I'll just start and see where we're going. If you, if you don't feel like I've addressed something that you want to hear about, just let me know. But um, one thought I had uh as I listened to uh the Steve, Steve Turley and Steve Groh, uh, there was a kind of a common concern about um reclamation and limits of disturbance. Some, after talking to them yesterday, we both, we talked to both of them yesterday one-on-one and maybe an idea would be to add a, some type of incentive to reclaim areas. If they reclaim areas, then they get a, an increase in the limits of disturbance for lots. That's a, that's definitely one way or, or, or an, an increase, a density bonus increase for reclamation. I, I know both of them uh referenced that and I, I'm not necessarily opposed to it.
I think um something like that makes some sense because it seems to me like their point about this fixing the scars in perpetuity. Um, cause certainly that's not the intent. Uh, I, Slate Canyon's been a scar for a long time and, and North University. I, I do wonder how we can address that because I think it would be a good idea.
There were several uh comments made about the Terra Development and building permits have been issued there and several things. There is no Terra Development. The planning commission saw a project called Terra months and months ago. It was ultimately turned down by the city council. There is no Terra Development. There is an eight lot subdivision going through our process called Woodlands. It's an eight lot subdivision, each lot is five acres. That's at the very beginning of our review process. We are a year or more away from issuing building permits there. And that's the extent of uh, uh Bob Jones' development in Provo at this time. Uh, there was a question about how did we decide the parcels? The planning commission knows that we started with a wide area, that the planning commission then even expanded uh even more than that towards the south part of the city. We started with a benchmark that was um, the limit of uh area where that we could service with water infrastructure. And we went from that point to the east of the mountainside. In getting uh input from property owners, we decided to subtract from that area lesser slopes than thirty percent that are very much developable. We subtracted from that platted subdivisions. Um, it, was anything else to be subtracted from that, Brandon?
That was a, that's, that was kind of the effort. We had, uh, we, we had had some direction given from, from the foothill committee. They told us to, to look at some of those sloped areas. We, we uh met with uh David Day of Engineering and, and he recommended some areas and we went through and cut those, those sloped areas out or kind of flat areas out. We, and then I went through and, and uh eliminated the subdivision lots and some uh parcels that I could uh identify as having a dwelling or uh, had, had dwellings on them. So I eliminated those and, and then that's kind of why you see kind of the, those little pockets of, of the CH zone left because uh that, that's what I eliminated was, was those subdivision lots and it left over some remnants, so.
Now, there were one or two places that are skewed on that issue because there's some rather large parcels that you would think would be in, should be in the hillside area, but they are, they are a planted subdivision lot. They were part of a subdivision. So under the definition we used, we took it out.
Right. One of those would be uh over by the Seven Peaks area. There's a large hole in the middle of the map. Uh, we, we probably would have included that, but it, it actually is in a subdivision lot. It wa- it was a giant lot. It probably included uh tens and tens of acres.
I think you've done a nice job. How, how would you go about defining ridgeline? I mean, what, how would you go about doing it?
I think it'd take a study.
And I, I think the best way to do it would, would be to map it because that's the issue everybody's concerned about. You know, is their property going to be considered a ridge line or not? And to me, to actually get something down on a map that people can see where their property lines fall in relation to that. I mean, I think that's what, I think we should go for that level of specificity at some point.
Did you want to address the forty percent um lot LOD? That was my question.
The forty percent I, I know uh, uh can be restrictive. I think there's a, a desire to protect the, the vegetation on the hillside. And so this was looked at as, as a, as a way to preserve, a, a way to, to allow development while still uh preserving vegetation. Uh, that, that uh, that ratio is actually uh um also used by Salt Lake County.
Oh, great.
So Erin, I have a question on that. Um, it kind of depends on how large the lot is, what that forty percent allows you to do. Would it make sense to say so many square feet or forty percent, whichever is larger?
Uh, that could, that's definitely a possibility.
Um, I mean, those lots up on the hill tend to be pretty large, but if you had a small one, um, it might really limit what kind of home you could build that would, and it wouldn't fit with that neighborhood.
You're suggesting maybe having a, a minimum at which they, they couldn't, having a minimum limit of disturbance area.
Right, and then up to forty percent, but-
I don't think a, a, a minimum's gonna, I, I don't, I'm not opposed to that. Um, we had, uh, someone had mentioned concern about development on the benches. Uh, we'd received feedback, of course, from this body about uh, you know, many, it's, it's been a common for a lot of property owners to want to build on benches and, and we saw that uh, we, we followed that direction. We see that, that, that that's probably held up by a lot of, of property owners as, as something important. And, and, and I'd say also uh concerns about shifting, you know, land or, or building too close to the slopes. I think those things uh could be addressed in, in title fifteen. In the engineering standards.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
What would uh the purpose be served by having a minimum? By say, having a minimum but not go over forty percent? What would, what would that serve?
I, wouldn't that benefit those, like we noted, if someone had a, a smaller lot, I think maybe Steve, Steve Groh mentioned it, like someone with a really small lot, you know, they take, you take forty percent of uh, of uh, of, you know, two-thirds acre lot and all of a sudden they're, they're, they're not left with much. So I, I could see maybe a benefit of having a minimum, especially for the, for the smaller
Okay, I understood his comment to mean that he was expressing a desire to be able to develop more than forty percent.
I did too.
So that gets to what I meant.
Right.
One of the things you got.
So I think um at least what I was expressing was that they should be able to develop at least a certain area, which might be more than forty percent. But then um, depending on the size of the lot, the, if it was a really large lot and forty percent was bigger than that minimum area, they could develop more than the minimum Does that make sense? No?
It made sense to me. I may not have articulated that, but that's kind of what I was trying to say. Like I, I think if there's a, a small lot, that they, they ought to have some type of minimum uh, you know, area-
But they're guaranteed at least that. And then, then they can also go up to forty percent if that is more fitting in the, in the situation.
Well, I really like the idea of giving a um, some sort of an incentive for redeveloping some of those old gravel pits.
I do too.
I think that's a, a good move.
The, the things I have on, on my bullet list are, how do we, how do we incentivize the scarring? What do we do with the cemetery plats? Uh, ridgeline defined, and that's, that's a pain, but I think, I think you might have to do it. And then uh, if you've got a really small lot, is, is, is there an exception for a very small lot to develop over forty percent?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a good uh list of, of things to, to address.
So keep in mind, existing lots have been taken out of this. So we're talking about future development when we're talking about lots.
I see, well, that's a good point.
Now that is true. So the, yeah, that's true. They would know ahead of time that they needed to develop uh enough.
Remember also, this is an aesthetic ordinance that was meant to try to encourage people to tuck the house into the parcel on land and the way where, where creates the most minimal disturbance. Remember, we've also had discussions about, you have to be very careful about how much irrigation you introduce into a hillside area. So you don't want people clearing a big lawn area around the house and then dumping a lot of water on that to keep it green. You know, there's a very careful balance in there. Remember, we talked about all this.
Yes.
Um, so what would the incentive look like um to encourage somebody to uh reclaim some of the scarring, some of the scarred land?
I think Andrew Howard just volunteered his checkbook.
Way to go, way to go, Andy.
It's dry.
I think I heard mentioned either uh allowing a greater percentage of LOD and forty percent or something else.
Density bonus.
Yeah, density bonus.
Those are the two thoughts I had.
Yeah.
But I'd also be happy to get Craig Carlisle's and uh Steve Turley's ideas on that because it sounds like they've given years of thought to that issue.
Um, and then would the reclamation actually count against the forty percent is also kind of what I heard from some of them?
Uh, to me, we would deal with that as a very different issue. To me, I wouldn't-
That would make sense to me that it's a different thing, so um-
Reclaiming what's already been scarred and to try to hold a forty percent limit of disturbance to that seems self-defeating if what we're trying to do is fix the scar.
Especially to encourage it, yeah.
So does that mean that you would exempt those properties from the, from the areas that would be affected by the overlay, simply because they have a different purpose?
Yeah, we have another section talking about reclamation of historic gravel pits or something like that. We'd have a separate section that deals with restoration of those types of lands.
And you would add that to this existing document?
I mean, if that's what the planning commission thinks we should do, we'll pursue that as we move this forward.
So what does that, what does that uh say in a nutshell? What, what would that language be like?
You're reclaiming a scarred area, you're going to get a certain density bonus or um increased limits. Or you'd have increased limits of disturbance.
But doesn't the Reclamation Act itself go against some of the restrictions on um terracing or digging into the hillside?
Depends on how they're reclaiming it.
So Mr. Pepperoni, for the purposes of the discussion of item four tonight, um, would it be in our interest to move this forward to council with those comments about the old scarred sites?
Yeah, what I think would happen if you- Yeah, what I think would happen if you, if you want to move it forward with comments, I believe the Hillside Committee, which includes three members of the council, will convene again to try to come up with what that should actually say, what that language would be before it goes on to council. That was, that's my guess. But if the county, if the planning commission feels like you'd like this stuff worked on before you send it on, we can do that too.
I guess the other issue was forty percent lot LOD or a minimum in square footage, right?
Again, we're not talking about existing lots. Ms. Laura, are you still worried about that when we're not talking about existing lots?
I'm, I just, I would assume that the lots would be large enough that people could build a house that matched other houses in the neighborhood. But since they're not platted yet, I don't know that there's a guarantee. So that was my hesitation there is that if a developer created an exceptionally small lot, what does that do? But I don't know. I don't know how likely that is, so I'm not sure how necessary it is. But I would like to see some flexibility.
Cemetery lots?
Cemetery lots.
I think you could put language in there that says as long as the land use remains intended as a cemetery, that it's exempt. Since that's the one, the one conflict there was.
Yeah.
So if we do that, we leave the, leave them in the, on the map, but exclude them through the language? If, if, I think that might be a good way to.
I feel like that's the cleanest fix to address it because all we're trying to make sure is that it doesn't get sold. You know, and that it changes use and then suddenly it's not in the zone anymore because we took them out of it.
Yep.
Excellent point. So the question is, if we decide we want to send this on to the council, pending the changes that we've suggested be resolved before they hear it, are we fine with them hearing it without us hearing it again?
I guess one other thing too is the, we'd probably like your feedback on the ridge lines too, on how to proceed with that.
I personally think you're going to have to define them or you're going to have people upset. And I know that's a heavy lift.
Defined in the ordinance or through mapping?
Through mapping.
Mapping.
Yeah, so that would be item, the next item. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
We're trying to get all the discussion out of the way now so we can.
No, I think it's good, yeah.
It's my fault. I should have read them both in together.
You trapped us.
No, it's late and I'm tired, so it didn't happen.
Amen to that.
Well, if someone wants to.
Well, we do have the option to hear it again at a future meeting, just quickly, just to review the, the couple of additions that we've talked about tonight. There's not the rush to get it to the city council that we were under last time. So if we wanted to do that, or if we feel comfortable letting staff make these changes and make these additions and then letting city council review it.
How do you feel about that, commissioners? You want to see it again? Do you want to leave this with staff with those one, two, three items that we want to clarify further?
I think there's enough changes. We probably should just do a quick review before we send it on.
That does make sense to me.
I mean, especially since we're saying we're going to meet with Craig Carlisle and Steve Turley and come up with an entirely new, well, not entirely new, but a new idea of the reclamation aspect of it. I think that that's probably adding a big enough chunk that maybe we want to know what it's going to be.
Right, so it sounds like we want to continue this? Until those four items or three items are incorporated into the language?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Wynden?
That we continue item four. Provo City Council Office requests an ordinance amendment to establish the critical hillside overlay zone by development standards to help protect the sensitive hillside areas of Provo City's spent citywide impact.
Right, and did you want to include?
Just and to give staff time to add language that we've discussed here tonight regarding reclamation of scarred areas and what were the other things?
Cemetery land use. And.
Ridge line definition.
Ridge line definition.
I think that's going to be part of the map amendment.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I think the third one for this would be the percent.
The le, le, limits of disturbance.
Yes.
The LOD.
And the cemetery plots.
Yeah, the.
She got that one.
Do you want to try to restate it? You want me to?
No. I couldn't get it all out the first time.
Okay, Ms. Wynden has proposed that we continue item four as so stated, for staff to have an opportunity to include language regarding cemetery land use, the forty percent lot LOD and/or minimum, and reclamation and remediation through development of old scarred sites on the hillsides. So that is Ms. Wynden's motion. Do we have a second for Ms. Wynden's motion?
Aye, second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. All those in favor of continuing item four for those purposes?
Aye, Andrew Howard.
Mr. Howard? Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Mr. Kiaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. We will continue item four. And associated with item four is item five, which was the zone map amendment, which will incorporate the boundaries. I'll read it and properly. Item five, Provo City Council Office repulses zone map amendment to include multiple each bunch properties in the critical hillside overlay zone with statewide application. Anything we wanted to add to this, item five? Mr. Larson?
Again, we, we eliminated the subdivision lots and developed parcels. There are, I think it was the Ranger Station, perhaps lots two and three. There, there's a couple of lots in Ranger Station that need to be eliminated from this map. So we, I would recommend that we, we do that. The, I think the map is, has been shaped by input by the public and, and and I think it's, I think it's definitely a, I, I think it's a fair. I, I think, go ahead, what's that?
I'd just say it's much cleaner.
Yes, it's much cleaner. I, I do want to point out, some people have kind of like, why, why is there all these little pockets? And it, I wasn't trying to intend to leave all these little pockets or, or just small little pieces. It's just, you know, after you eliminate the subdivision lots, that's what you're left with. And I, I didn't feel at liberty to start eliminating them. So that's, that's where we ended up and that was the direction we, we received from, from the council, members of the council from the foothill community.
And now on this map, would you propose having the map ridge lines that are going to be mapped, shown on this map?
You know, that's, that's interesting. I'm trying to think if I've ever seen a zone, zone map with, with ridge lines. I, I wondered if it might be, maybe, I don't know, I'd like, obviously Bill's input on this too. I, I wonder if, if there's another type of map. I don't know if it could be shown in.
As part of item four, perhaps?
Yeah, it could be, it could be included in the, in the, in the text. It could be.
As an exhibit.
Right.
If we get into, once we get into that analysis, if we figure out there's a better way to do it, then we'll propose that rather than amend this map.
Sounds good.
That sounds good.
I'll just briefly show you some hills, some 3D photos of the, of the hillside. Of course, I started on the north end of Provo Canyon, the mouth of Provo Canyon. And then I'm going to go into the, into the foothill drive area to view. You can see most of that area has been cut out. This is the mouth of Rock Canyon. I think that's a good addition to protect a rock canyon area. I'll go move down. You can see areas in the foothill neighborhood, Oak Hills neighborhood. Or rather, I've gone backward. I keep going the wrong way. This is the area of, of Oak Hills and the foothills neighborhood. And moving down south, what I add here, this was the area where there, there's a big subdivision lot right in this area. If you can see my cursor. We would have included this land here, but again, it's platted. It's lot one of Seven Peaks subdivision Platte, I think. So, and then finally, as we, we're coming here on the, down on the south end, Mr. Turley and, and staff talked about this area yesterday. There, this is, I think, an area that's been mentioned by a lot of people that is kind of an eyesore and that it's, it's included in the CH overlay zone. And then, let's see if there's one more map. I guess that's it. So you can see that the CH zone dies just before we get to that southern gravel pit. That's not in the, in the city, otherwise it would have been addressed. So we, we don't have a, an ability at this point to address it through a, an ordinance or a zone map amendment because it's not in our jurisdiction. And that is, if you have any other questions, I certainly can answer them, so.
So you just have a couple of parcels you need to go in and remove?
Yes, there, there's a couple. They're, they're actually in the, I think they're, they're right, right here perhaps. They're, they're at the mouth of Rock Canyon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, commissioners?
So is there any question that we're going to continue this so that they can work on it together with the item four?
I agree. I think they should.
It would make sense.
I think that'll give us flexibility in how we move forward with addressing the ridge lines if we continue both.
Do we need to have public comment first?
I was just going to ask that. Staff, do we have any public comment coming in on the map, item five?
Yes, I have two written comments. The first one is from Paul Perry of Provo. He has three simple questions. Number one, who selected the parcel shown in the overlay maps? Number two, what is the specific criteria used to select properties on the maps? Number three, what is the definition of a developed property? Then I have another one. This is from Larry Henderson of Provo. And Larry asks, how would this help Provo? Those are the only written comments. I'm not seeing any phone in comments, but let's give it about thirty seconds.
So to Mr. Perry's questions, I think we've answered all of those. And to the second question, it benefits Provo by minimizing aesthetic and environmental impacts to the hillsides.
Mr. Phillips, did you have a comment?
No, that was just a yawn. I'm sorry.
We're glad to hear you're still awake there, Mr.
Honest man.
Okay, I, I don't have any other public comment.
Great, thank you. We will close item five to public comment then. I'll turn it back to commissioners.
I think I would just make a motion to move item five to, to come up at the same time item four does next go around.
So Mr. Howard, your motion is to continue item five and be re-presented with the parcel amendments, staff plans to make, and resubmitted with item four.
Yes, ma'am. Sounds good.
I would second that.
Seconded by Ms. Urkiaga. All those in favor of continuing item five? Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson? And Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. We'll continue item five and bring it back with item four. Last item on the agenda.
Woo hoo. Oh, sorry.
This is for project plan approval. Item six. Brent Tippett's request project plan approval for the Provo City Center Building to be located at 495 West Center Street in the general downtown zone. This affects the downtown neighborhood and Mr. Maxfield will present, item six.
Little change. I think Commissioner Wynden's would be more convincing if you had a little fan to the side. Maybe it'll look like you're really there. Hawaii background. Just in beginning this, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get on the PowerPoints. But the, this item does not involve a parking reduction request, so. At least to be at that point.
Hallelujah.
I may have the problem.
Only because there isn't a number you're basing it off of. You confessed that in your report.
Yes, there's three thirteen, three hundred and thirteen spaces, what would be required. And they have three hundred and thirty-six. They, we, I guess speaking of staff, this is a city hall. And just, we have, I think Brent Tippett's is still on the line. Oh, yeah, there you are down below. See that? Maybe it'd be better to let him do a lot of this presentation for sake of time. But we did, he did include some new building renderings. The design review committee asked for some updates on some of those. So those have been included on the PowerPoint presentation. And then we can go through the various aspects, maybe as Brent gives information on that. If, if you have questions of staff first to start with, we could answer some of those. But otherwise, if you want to go ahead with his presentation.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Just wondering how quick they can make it.
I can make this very quick.
All right, I'll take that as no additional questions and turn it over to Mr. Tippett.
Okay, is the video or is PowerPoint up?
Not yet.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it.
Oh, I've got it on my other screen. Did we change the screen? Nope.
Thank you for your patience. It's a long wait.
Likewise to you. You're the ones that have had to sit through all this, work through it, so.
Can you see the city hall rendering?
Yes.
Yes, we see it now. So thank you for. Yes, we see it now. So uh thank you for your patience and the opportunity to present the uh Provo City Hall project to you in the Public Safety Building. Uh as you all are probably very familiar with, the new city hall project is located on Center Street and five hundred West, location of the old Firestone Store and the Burger Shop, and just to the uh west of the Covey Center. Uh and that's the image that you see on the screen is from that intersection looking, and the Covey is, you can see it located behind and its placement. Uh we have been before the uh DRC uh and presented to them. They did have, they forwarded this on with approval with some requests of things that we look at, and these renderings address the things that uh they did ask us to look at, one of which was the um colors on the building itself. The earlier renderings that we had showed the materialism a little bit closer together, and there wasn't as much uh a differentiation between them. The materials are brick that is in this tan area here. There's two different colors of brick. Uh the lighter area, the whiter color, is uh GFRC or glass fiber reinforced concrete. Uh these are horizontal panels and uh they they'll have quite a shadow line to them, the way that they're set. They're set at different depths. And then, of course, um we have uh facing to the west, we have tried to address all shading issues associated with the west exposure there, where we're introducing a metal panel that creates a shading device for the windows that is located in these areas here that you see. And that, those are the major themes for the building itself. You can see we do have a public plaza that is off of the area. We do intend to have a piece of artwork out there that would identify and make um it iconic Provo. You can see we've elevated the building and put it on a little bit of a plinth uh to give it a little stronger presence as a major civic building. Uh let's move on to the next image. This is going to look from the backside. Whoop, there we go. Uh and this is more of a bird's eye to try to give you a good perception of what's going on. Again, the Covey Center that is here, and this is the building. Uh what you don't see in this image is further to the east is uh the second block associated with this, which is also an ongoing topic. Here you go. So here's a site plan, and here you see the building, and where it sits, this is the Covey Center. So north is up. Eastern portion of the block, the majority of the um block will be demolished. However, we are currently showing uh fire station number one staying in its location pending uh some, a study that is being done on the fire station and citywide and knowing what to do with that station. But currently, it is planned to stay in this location, but that's not a long-term solution. This is a short-term solution for it. But also, this, there is a RFP RFQ out for this half of the block for redevelopment. Um and associated with that, RFP is making sure that whatever is developed replaces the parking that is associated with this, because we are utilizing parking that is here to help operate and maintain. But if we go back to that uh second image now, uh there, you can kind of see, this is a public parking area that's further to the west, and this area uh becomes a uh this is a secondary entrance or an area that most people will probably enter the building, will be coming in from this east side, and this is an entrance that comes in. There's also an entrance off of that plaza area that you saw in the previous rendering. And that, those two entrances, if you can visualize, connect into a corridor in the center of the building that divides the building into two pieces. The easterly portion is the city hall portion. The westerly portion is the public safety building. And intentionally, they're separated because of their functions and the security associated with it. This here is an enclosed, secure uh parking area for the police staff. There is a ramp that goes down to an underground parking area that will be for staff, not for public access and utilization. And again, you can see we're bringing in and introducing the same materials that you saw in the other locations where we've got the brick. We have some GFRC that is located in here. And uh one of the big issues that came out of the Design Review Committee was trying to address this area. This is an update from what was there, what was shown previously to them, did not define this area. Um there did not seem to be as good of a connection between the parking lot and the entrance to the building. This is a plaza area that you go into, and so we've made some adjustments and some changes there. And we have substantial amount of landscaping that we're providing here. There is, there's several things that drive kind of this design, and a lot of it is associated with Covey Center itself, because we had to maintain access to the Covey Center. We have a loading dock back here. We also have uh electrical equipment located in front of that, that that we are enclosing now. We're trying to screen all that and address it, but we're maintaining access to that. And also, just a drop-off area for the Covey Center for both performances and also for rehearsals that would, and so that half-circle radius area is designated for that. So we're trying to address many things that happen at that point in addition to it being an entrance into the building. And then there's a walkway off to the right-hand side of the image here that comes from the additional parking that would be going into the building there. And then we can move on to the next image. This is just some quick massing from uh different areas of the building. Uh we'll skip past that unless you've got any questions. We've talked about the site a little bit. I think we've covered the majority of the issues associated with it. This is that enclosed uh parking area. Here is the ramp that goes down. I did mention before, there is another ramp from that basement parking that exits out onto Center Street. It is an egress only, and it's primarily a security issue associated with police vehicles, so that they have a second means of egress of getting out in the case of an emergency, and they're not locked in, or locked in there. Uh next image. Uh okay, and these are just enlargements of that plaza area. Here we have the entrance into the building itself. Uh the city uh council chambers is on the main floor in this general area to the right of that main plaza area. Uh the main entrance into the public safety building is off on this far left corner. Um and that would be able to be maintained on a twenty-four-seven operation while the rest of the building would be locked down and not used. And then this is just a plan view of that uh back plaza area as well. So and I'm gonna be a little bit brief. Uh that's that's a quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'll turn it back to you to ask any questions you have.
I should say, we did not include floor plans be uh for security reasons. Uh we can give you the gentle thing. I think he mentioned that with the cha- council chambers and some of the other aspects, but the main customer service areas are on the first floor. Uh you know, the the highest action areas. Mayor's office is up on the top floor, administration.
Sorry, I'm talking to myself. Any questions, commissioners? We appreciate that uh tour through the project very well. Looks like a complicated program to squeeze onto a site.
Well, the building itself was a complicated program, but the site, I have to say, was probably even more complicated. It was harder than it looks. Uh but I think we've come up with a successful solution that will address the current needs and also into the future as things change in that area.
I have a few questions.
Ms. Jensen?
So it looks like the renderings that he just showed us are more updated than the ones we got in the staff report, but just to make sure, on um page three, the the dru- the drive-through area, is that gonna be signed as a one-way road just for safety?
Yes, definitely. It will be signed uh a direction and wrong way.
Okay. And then the, there'll be curbs. It looks like in your new drawings, there'll be curbs to protect the pedestrian traffic.
Okay, so there will be curbs where there is parking uh area, so that would be raised walking and protection of the pedestrians there. When you get to that half-round area, it is not a curb. It is at plaza level, but you'll notice we've carefully placed bollards.
But there's those little, there's the little metal barriers, right?
Bollards, yes. We have those there to protect the pedestrians.
All right, the initial drawing just showed this big, beautiful, open plaza, and I thought, hmm, that's problematic.
Yeah, that that was some of our issues we had with the Design Review Committee as well.
Okay, and then the other question I had was um the landscaping for the temporary, we want this to be redeveloped, but we're not quite sure what's gonna happen with it. We think it's gonna be a mini park, but we're gonna do sort of a not-too-expensive job so we don't waste money. I just wanted to throw the question out. Um would we be okay with this if it was someone other than the city making this request? Would we be okay with the landscaping kind of a turn a blind eye if it's not quite up to the standards we would want it to be? Obviously, I don't want to spend taxpayer dollars on something that's gonna be destroyed immediately after, but just to make sure we're not doing.
And that's why the uh recommended condition, number two, is there, so that that can be looked at and examined as we go through before they get final occupancy of the building or we get, whoever gets it.
Do you feel like you addressed the concerns from the Design Review Committee about the backside of the building not really looking as fantastic as the front side?
Uh we do believe that we've tried to address their issues. There was one area of concern and uh there's differing opinions on it, and there's differing opinions on the Design Review Committee about it, but the idea of they, w- we made a conscious effort to try to not make this look like a big building. And in essence, you can see here, we've kind of separated it and tried to make it feel more like two buildings that may be connected more with uh, you know, they they took some exception to that area right here. We still feel like it's the right solution uh that we do have, you know, kind of these two masses, and they're completely separate from each other. And functionally, it kind of demonstrates on the outside what's happening more on the inside of the building. But that was the one thing that I guess they might have some exception to.
Has has the city council looked at this? I know it's not uh part of their items, but have you had comments from them?
We have done uh reviews with the city council at different levels, both through programming and also through design and layout, so they have seen that, yes.
Thank you.
On this backside, is there access to the Covey Center entrance up those stairs?
Yes. There will be, there will be access. There's an entrance. There's a door entrance here, and there is access. The current access actually gets an application.
Let me see it there, yeah. The landscaping is also set up to blend in to the landscape in the back of the Covey Center. You can kind of see that. It kind of makes it look like a larger area than just the individual plaza for city hall. When you combine with the Covey Center, it's pretty substantial that way.
What's the projected lifespan of this building? I know that uh when I went to the open house, they said that, you know, there was room to grow in this building, but what's the projected lifespan of it?
Well, the the, there's two different things there as far as, you know, if the city grows, there might be other space needs that need to be accommodated. There is growth within the building that has been planned and addressed. Uh but I think what you're asking is uh, you know, what would be the expected life of the building from a durability standpoint? And uh I would envision this building being an eighty-year-plus building.
I think the city looked at uh staffing projections based on the increase from a hundred and eighteen thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand population, which what the forecasts are. Uh but even then, it's not exactly the same ratio, because you do maybe increase fire and some other uh police based on that, but you don't add like an extra city recorder, there's extra mayor, anything like that. So some offices don't grow based on any population change while others do. So based on that, uh uh the parking's actually fairly close to that build-out. Uh it probably will be with the parking garage, you know, or whatever's built on that east side. Uh we may look to add some spaces just to accommodate some of that growth. If every staff member uh that works at city hall uh is at city hall at a point in time, if you had forty visitors at one point in time, if you had all the fleet vehicles, everything uh uh, try to think something else, and and had everyone there at one time, it would be like three hundred and thirty-nine. Our study that we looked at is even looking at the use of the parking lot. That actually showed a use of about two hundred and eight of the existing three hundred and eight spaces on a normal day, uh because we have people that walk and bike and and get to school or get to school, get to city hall otherwise. Uh and that also does not take into account any reduction due to the downtown area. Like I said, this is straight parking requirement without any request for reduction.
So I'm assuming that you can't give us details because of security reasons, but um are you?
You can come in and look at the floor plans if you'd like.
I I'm just wondering about um taking into account changes in technology. There have been so many different things that have happened in the last thirty years. I don't know that we have any idea what kind of technological requirements a building will have in the next fifty, and can you address how that adaptability is built in?
Talk about the transporter room. No.
Okay.
We'll let him address that.
Well, lem- let me try to quickly address two things. One is, I can share with you that, again, the public safety portion of it, can you see my mouse? I'm not sure if you see my mouse or not. Did I move it? No? Okay, so the public safety is this bar of space on the west side, and then the city hall is this bar. They're kind of shifted and offset from each other. And then there is a public uh uh circulation element that goes through the middle of the building, right through the middle between those two bars that's open vertically through all floors. So you could look up and you'd see all the way to the top of the fourth floor. And that's the separation between the two functions within the building. Uh as far as technology, as best as we can work with the crystal ball of what technology is gonna be in the future, we've provided infrastructure to accommodate future expansion and the ability to change out technology, the best that we know. What we see right now in technology is actually a reduction of raceways and cabling within buildings and going more wireless and so forth, which actually works to our advantage and goes well. Uh we have the Emergency Operations Center for the city located in this building, and we have all of the uh major infrastructure technology-wise is also located in this building. So we have a computer room. We have a lot of high-end technology that's associated with the building in here, and it's all been carefully looked at. We've brought in experts from across the country to work with us on making sure that we're adequately addressing it from a public safety and security side as well as from a technology side.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Any other questions, commissioners?
I thought of another one. The, that U-shaped drive-through parking lot, is that going to be visitor parking only?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Ms. Brain, do we have any public comments?
I'm not seeing any phone-in comments. I have not received any typed comments. But let's give it about 30 seconds for it to catch up to see if we have any.
So we're open for a public comment on item six?
Dave's backing up to leave already.
I know.
Okay, I'm, I'm not getting any comments called in or typed.
Thank you. I'll close item six to public comment then and turn it back to the commissioners for further discussion and/or motion.
I think it's a lovely building and I'm excited to see it move forward. And that's not just because it's after 11 o'clock.
I agree. It beats the heck out of our 1970s city hall.
I even love, I even love the Provo sign-out front that the Design Committee didn't like.
Yeah, I'd rather see a sculpture.
I think they said they were going to do one. They're going to have an art piece out there. Isn't that what you said?
Yeah.
Yes, it is actually right now. It's looking like the potential maybe of using the Provo sign, but that's not finalized.
Oh, so not an art piece.
Well, I guess that's what you define as art.
Provo sign is, is the, is the art. That's what you're saying?
Yes, but, but it plays into actually a bigger picture throughout the city too. So I, I don't want to open up Pandora's box. There will be something out there. And it's further being developed, put it that way.
Okay. Well, I can make a motion, Ms. Jensen.
Ms. Wynden, that would be wonderful.
I propose that we approve item six. Brent Tippett's request for project plan approval for the Provo City Center Building to be located at 495 Western Street in the downtown DTI Zone.
Thank you, Ms. Wynden. Do we have a second for Ms. Wynden?
I second it.
Does that include the conditions?
Yes, then that includes the, in the staff recommendations that all requirements of the CRC are meant and allow staff approval of a final landscaping plan after further review of the Designs Review Committee. Did I include everything?
Nope, that's not my part.
Do we have a second for Ms. Wynden's motion?
I second it.
Seconded by, was that Mr. Phillips?
It was, yes.
Great, thank you. All those in favor of approving item six with those conditions as stated? Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. Item six is approved.
I move that we adjourn.
Very much.
You're welcome.
I second Lisa's motion.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Jensen, seconded by Ms. Urkiaga. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Nice job. Nice job, Madam Chairman.
Oh, thank you all for hanging in. We are adjourned.
Yay. Good night.